I want to call the January the 21st, 2021 meeting and the very municipal planning commission to order. This meeting is being held in compliance with Governor Lee's executive order for continuing the state of emergency to facilitate the response to COVID-19. This meeting can be viewed live on Fairget YouTube channel, www.fareget, townoffairget.org backslash livestream, charter channel 193, TDS channel 3. And if the meeting comments can be emailed through the comments at townoffairget.org and are to be received by noon on the day before a meeting, that will be included for record of that meeting. If anyone wishes to provide a comment, they must include their name and address. For questions, please email Mark Shipley, markshipley@mshipleytownoffairget or barthoz, Does everybody hear me? Yes. Okay. Tonight, we're going to, I will read the item, then Mark will respond to that item with his introduction of the item and give a background. Then, we will have the, Mark will then ask for motion, will have a motion, and then move from after the motion on to the applicant for their discussion. Is this the right order, Mark?
Yeah, well.
And then, planning commission will ask questions after the applicant has made their introduction to their item. At that point, they can ask questions or make comments. And Mark, do you want to take a role before we get started with the rest of the agenda?
Yeah, let me take a role. This is Mark Shipley. And let me just call out the planning commissioners, Chairman Holliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dick.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Here.
Williams.
Mayor, here.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Here.
Commissioner Russ. Commissioner Myers. Vice Mayor Poblen.
Vice Mayor Poblen, here.
It looks like so far, and I think I saw that Youth Representative Austin Struble.
Yeah, I'm here.
He's here, okay. So it looks like Commissioner Myers is the only one absent at this point. He may be joining us in a minute. Haven't heard from him otherwise, so.
Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to this, Mark?
No.
Mayor Williams motion to approve.
Vice Mayor Poblen, second.
All those in favor?
I'll read them out, yeah. Chairman Holliday.
Approve.
Commissioner Dick.
Approve.
Commissioner Green.
Mr. Green, approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Approve.
Mayor Williams.
Williams, approve.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Approve.
Commissioner Russ.
Approve.
Vice Mayor Poblen.
Approve.
And Commissioner Myers. He's not here yet, so. And the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Item number two is the approval of the minutes for the December 17th, 2020 meeting. Do we have any changes to the last meeting minutes?
I don't.
Mayor Williams, motion to approve.
Vice Mayor Poblen, second.
Okay, Chairman Holliday.
Approve.
Commissioner Dick.
Approve.
Commissioner Green.
Approve.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Approve.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, approve.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Approve.
Commissioner Russ.
Approve.
Vice Mayor Poblen.
Vice Mayor Poblen, approve.
Commissioner Myers. Okay. And that passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Move on to item number three, discussion in public hearing on a re-subdivision plat for the property at 11824 Kingston Pike, 1.79 acres, zone R-3, R-2, three lots, Troy Storvis, applicant.
Now, this item actually was a property that was rezoned back in August. It fronts on Federal Boulevard, it's right behind the First Bank, that fronts on Kingston Pike. It had been zoned to office, and the applicant property re-zoned it to R2, general single-family residential, so that they could subdivide the property into three lots. There's an existing house on Lot 1, that's, you can see there on the screen. And then, they basically are creating two additional single-family lots, both of which comply with the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. And staff recommends approval of this re-subdivision, subject to the three comments that were sent to you all dealing with obtaining the signatures, paying the drainage permit fee, and just verifying the status of that joint permanent access easement that provides access to what is, will be Lot 1, if that's being modified in any way as a result of this plat. I guess it's not, but that just needs to be verified. I think Mr. Stavros is, I think I did see him on the call if anybody has any questions for me or the applicant.
So we'll move on to a motion at this point.
Second.
Second.
Did someone second?
Mayor Williams, second.
Okay. All right, any discussion on that?
This is Commissioner Green, I have a question. You have three items that are subject to the following comments, which we didn't make as a part of the motion, but do those items become a part of the record? Because they're not in the agenda, they're in your recommendations.
They become, yeah, they become part of the minutes.
Okay.
That.
And shouldn't the motion be subject to the three?
Yes. Yes, it should.
Thank you.
Who made the original motion?
Mr. Dick.
Matty, can you amend your motion?
Yes, I amend the motion to include the items from the planning coming off.
Mayor Williams, you seconded, can you second that?
I can second it, please, Mayor Williams.
Okay.
Rita, are you going to go through each name, or are we just kind of doing a, everybody kind of?
Mark is.
Hold on, lost my place here. All right, Commissioner, well, Chairman Holliday, this is to, if you have any questions of the staff.
Questions or comments?
Commissioner Dick.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
I have no questions, I approve.
Okay, Commissioner St. Clair.
I approve and don't have any questions.
Mayor Williams.
Yeah, Mayor Williams, yes, left for the applicant to give us a, an answer to or three.
Okay. Troy, if you're on the, in the meeting, if you could answer that or try to answer that question. This deals with the existing joint access easement, if it will be affected by this re-subdivision. I'm not sure if he's able to communicate that or not, he may.
He's there, but he's muted. Troy, you're muted. There you go. Still can't hear you. We can't hear you.
No nothing?
Still can't hear you, oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now? Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, the plan is just to keep the joint permanent easement in place, it's obviously only going to affect Lot 1.
Okay.
Because that's, because it's obviously not going to be touching Lot 2 or 3.
Okay, you may just want to add a plat note to that effect then on the plat, I don't believe it was on the revised one, if you don't mind.
Will do, yeah, I was talking with the surveyor about getting that done, so we'll get all that squared away.
Okay, sir, you have no problem with the drainage permit fee?
None whatsoever, let's just pay that at town hall there.
Okay, yeah, you could do that, yeah, or online, either one.
Okay, yeah. And what about the signatures, once the plat comments have been addressed, you have any issue with that?
No, that'll be, that'll be easy enough.
Okay, that's all I have, Mark.
Okay. Commissioner Bellamy.
Approve, no questions.
Commissioner Russ.
I have no questions, and I approve.
Okay, Vice Mayor Poblen.
I have a few questions, but, Mark, did you, did the HOA president for Fairget Crossing ever reach out to you?
No, no, not on this, no.
He had concerns when this was first brought to us as a rezoning, about the access from, for Lot 2 and Lot 3. He's concerned that if they are pulling out onto Federal Boulevard, then they have to make a U-turn, that that could be dangerous. I have no idea, don't live there, so I assume from looking at this, that Lot 2 and Lot 3, Troy, your intention is to have them have access to Federal Boulevard?
Correct.
So they'll be, basically be a right out, they won't obviously be able to turn left to get out.
Correct.
And then they'll have to make a U-turn at that first island.
They will, yeah, and I don't see it being too much of an issue, there's already one house that does it, and it's not like there's a whole bunch of traffic that comes down there, so it'll be pretty easy.
Okay, is that an island, but it's not the, doesn't have cross traffic that goes into the church parking lot, is that accurate? I can't remember.
The only traffic that would go in cross, there would be no cross traffic unless someone was coming out of our joint permanent easement across the street into the church parking lot.
Okay.
And that doesn't really happen. And the nice thing about where they would have to do a U-turn is, that's, it's also the left into a street that goes into Fairget Crossing, so it's a big area, so there's a lot of room to work there.
Okay, all right, well, I guess I see that on the map in the corner there. Okay, those were my only concerns, only because I know the HOA president was concerned about that. That's all I had.
Okay, it sounds like the, the motion would pass then by a vote of eight to zero, I believe everybody indicated they were okay approving it.
I think so.
This is Vice Chairman St. Clair, I'd like to ask a question or, why are we asking comments and vote at the same time and going down the road? We've never done that, never.
We weren't doing that.
Well, you motioned second to start the discussion, and.
We should probably do a roll call vote, Mark, just to be sure.
Okay.
And Noah Myers is on the, is in the meeting now.
Noah's joined us.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, so the motion in second is to approve the plat, subject to the three comments noted. And I will record the vote, Chairman Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, aye.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Mr. Pa, or Vice Mayor Poblen.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay, the vote passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, discussion in public hearing on a final plat for the Ivy Farms subdivision, Phase 1, Unit 2, zone R-1, OSR, 22 lots, 10.87 acres, applicant.
This, this is the second phase of the Ivy Farms subdivision north of Union Road. As you enter the property from the roundabout on Union Road, it's the first road, it's basically with plat the first road on your left, that's Duck Foot Lane. There's 21 building lots, and an open space area between the building lots and Town Creek. And, pretty straightforward, basically the remaining subject twos are, there was a question that the town engineer posed about slope and construction easements being added as a plat note, if that's something that's acceptable with TDOT and working with the applicant. The second one was paying a drainage permit fee of $630. The third was to provide an erosion control letter of credit, and that would be based on an amount provided by the town engineer. If what we already have covers this area, then it would not apply. And then obtaining the signatures, once the plat comments have been addressed, and then completing the field items that relate to this phase of Ivy Farms, including stabilization. So with those five subject twos, staff recommends approval of the final plat for Unit 2, Phase 1 of Ivy Farms.
Mark, this is Ed St. Clair, on number five, talk about the field-related punch list, how many items are on that punch list?
I don't know, it's not something.
Field walk down?
It's basically just, yeah, like backfilling curbs, stabilization of non-building areas, you know, completion of sidewalks that are maybe along open space lot areas, things like that, basically.
Okay.
It's pretty standard of any, whether it's.
Field walk down, items that are very specific to individual items.
Before we go to the applicant and then discussion?
I'm going to move to approve with the subject twos.
Okay.
Second, this is Ed St. Clair.
All those in favor?
We're going to do a roll call?
Yeah, we have to have a discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion first, okay, go ahead with the discussion.
Discussion is what the motion in seconds for is, to start the discussion, so then after that, we'll have our roll call vote on it.
The applicant here?
I think John Anderson, I think I saw him on the call, if he had any questions, I'm not sure.
Yes, this is John Anderson, Site Incorporated, I'm here, and Joey Wallace with Good Old Homes is also on here.
Okay.
All right, do you have any questions, and are you okay with the subject twos?
The only thing that I had was that if we can just expedite the number one, subject two, if there's anything we can do to expedite that, so that we know if we're welcome to make a plat note, or whatever we can to make sure that TDOT and you all are happy with it.
I would probably just reach out to the town engineer tomorrow, and just see what's the status of that, I think he has maybe talked with TDOT about that, see where that stands, because I'm not sure. Will do.
Anybody else have any questions or comments, for the, Mark or the applicant?
Okay, I'll, I will do a roll call vote on the motion, and so it's, this is a motion to approve, subject to the five, subject twos noted by staff. Chairman Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, aye.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
I'm aye.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Poblen.
Vice Mayor Poblen, aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
And the motion passes by a vote of nine to zero.
And you will get with the town tomorrow? The applicant get with the town tomorrow, is that what you want?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, I'll reach out to town engineer tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, discussion in public hearing on the site plan for closing the existing covered outdoor seating area at the First Watch Restaurant, 1111 Level Roads on C-1 Design Innovation Architects, DIA applicant.
This is a minor site plan, it's really coming, coming to you as a architectural review, design standard review. Basically, the First Watch building out there at Level Road, behind, near Costco, they have a, kind of an open outdoor seating area on the west side of that building, and they're proposing to basically enclose that with these roll-up kind of garage doors, similar to what y'all looked at with the Elliott's boots, they're on Campbell Station Road and Station West, year or so ago. So, that's what they're proposing, so that they can, you know, open those up, the weather's favorable, but yet close them if, if they need to, to protect patrons from the elements. So, there's a couple of options that were presented in the packet, the one on the top of the screen basically shows, let me get my pointer going here. So, this, this area here, the top of the screen, basically the storefront is matching the remainder of storefronts, on this will be the north elevation. And then on the lower image option two, they basically are proposing to put kind of the roll-up door look, similar to what they're proposing on the west side of the building, where the outdoor seating is being enclosed. Staff recommendation is that it would look more consistent if they matched the remaining storefronts on the north elevation, but we do recommend approval of the site plan otherwise, with the preference being noted for option 01, due to it, from a staff's perspective, being more compatible with the other spaces.
Do I have a motion?
Commissioner St. Clair, I move for approval, and in support, also option one of that group.
Mayor Williams will second it.
Is the applicant with us?
Yes, I think Mr. Goza is here. You got any questions?
Hi, this is Tyler, I'm on the call.
Okay, thank you for coming. Do you have anything you wish to add before we start discussion?
That's pretty much covered it. Basically, the goal is just to get a few more months of use and comfort out on this, this patio. I will say, when the job was built in 2013, it was, it was basically designed such that it could, could be enclosed, so there's, there's insulation out there in the walls and things like that, so it was something anticipated when it was built, but pretty much, yeah.
Okay, thank you, anybody having questions or comments?
Hi, this is Commissioner Russ, Mr. Goza, and I just wanted to clarify though, are we voting to approve option one, option two, or is that open-ended? And, Mr. Goza, I was just wondering, what is your preference between option one and option two?
Commissioner Russ, the motion was to approve option one.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Poblen, and, Mr. Goza, did you have a preference between the option one, option two, if the applicant?
So I'm speaking on behalf of First Watch, and they wanted us to design basically option two as an alternate, so I don't want to say he is, the client is for sure favoring option one, but we clearly were given the go-ahead for option one with an alternate to just price option two, if, if you were agreeable to keeping that option.
Okay, so, and thank you for clarifying that, and the rear elevation, is that part of option one or option two? Because I have seen one where there's a roll-up door, and one without, on the south side elevation.
Yeah, I think there could be, I think there's a couple more sheets in here that might show what's out there today, but it basically, in either option, yeah, so I guess you can see kind of in the top right image, in either option, that's just going to be storefront in the back, it's like a, it's like a back-of-the-house situation back there, there's a dumpster, so the middle image on the right is kind of where I'm looking at, there's a dumpster back there, and it's sort of discouraging, I guess, the garage door look back there, but, so that, there would be no option for garage door back there.
Okay, thank you. I have no other comments.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Okay, so the motion on the floor was to recommend approval of option 01, which matches the other tenant spaces on the north elevation. So with that, Chairman Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, aye.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Poblen.
Vice Mayor Poblen, aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay, and the motion passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, moving on to item number six now, discussion in public hearing on the site plan for the Kingston Pike Village, Phase 2 Grocery Store and Retail Shops, 115 South Watt Roads, on PCD, 8 acres, GBS Engineering, applicant.
This is the second phase of the planned commercial development along South Watt Road, north of Kingston Pike, or, excuse me, south of Kingston Pike and west of South Watt Road. This particular phase includes a, about a 53,000 square foot grocery store, and two roughly 10 and a half thousand square foot retail buildings along Kingston Pike. As you remember, the first phase of this PCD project was multifamily component to the south, and this would finish out that particular project. This is kind of a, a blow-up image of the grocery store portion of the project, and And let's see here, let me highlight something. This is the, the fuel center area. And then this is the grocery store. And over to the left, further over to the left, and this area is South Watt Road. And let's see here. Go to some of the other images just to show you a couple of things. This is an image of the retail shops down facing Kingston Pike. The buildings are brought up closer to the street. And basically just to the west of Little Joe's Pizza. There would be connections into the property in a couple of different locations through the Y-12 access to the west. And then also to east of that, a right in, right out, just to the west of Little Joe's Pizza. And then an access over to South Watt Road through the back of Little Joe's Pizza property. And then, of course, the shop portion is tied in with the grocery store portion. This is kind of the overall layout. The area between the shops is like an outdoor seating area in this general location. I think one of the comments that was brought up during the staff developer discussion was the dumpster location and it, as we talked about, that's going to be in this area here for the retail shops. Let's see, some other things to point out. Let's go to look at some of the, some of the color renderings. The two retail buildings are mostly, almost all their brick. And they do have a lot of transparency on the north elevation facing Kingston Pike. And that's kind of what they're proposed to look like, they would be identical looking buildings. But that's the, the elevations for those. And then the grocery store, this is the, the top image is the east-facing building, the front elevation that you enter the building from. And then the one below that is the back of the building, the west elevation. And then the two sides. The building does meet their 75% brick requirement for the net facade area. And let's look at this, this is an image of what the fuel center, now just exclude the signage because that would be a separate review. But that's basically what they're proposing there. I'm not sure if the, the red is, would be quite that bright. That was one thing, and when I looked at this, is it, the last submittal was the first image that I'd actually seen of these. If the commission had any, any input on the, the color. If there is an option to kind of, and it may not be exactly a realistic color, but it looks pretty bright, at least in this image. Again, just taking away the signage, they'd have to meet the town sign ordinance requirements for that. But that's something that may want to get some feedback on. But we do recommend approval of the site plan. There were 13 remaining comments. And let me just go through those real quick. Landscape plan, and some of these, as you'll see, are just standard comments, reminders. That's why we are recommending approval of the plan. The landscape plan is, this is a reminder comment, basically has to be presented to and approved by the Visual Resources Review Board. The signage, again, has to comply with all applicable provisions of the town's sign ordinance. Because there are some signs that are shown on the site plans, the middle, that would not comply like what we looked at with the fuel center. Erosion control letter of credit for 140,000, drainage permit fee for 7,550. Providing the town with the T-Dot permit for access and working within the T-Dot right-of-way. Noting that the curb and gutter must have a minimum six-inch depth of concrete gutter. Checking all dimensions and elevations shown on outlet structures in relation to those shown in drainage calculations. Number eight, that the exterior lighting must be concealed so that the light source cannot be seen and glare is avoided. Number nine, and this is something I can go over on the plan a little bit too. Basically, to meet the fire code, they're proposing a grass paver path around the building. And that's what that comment's talking about. That says basically regarding the tough rack paver system, please ensure that the concrete border is clearly marked with reflectors or reflective paint as approved by town staff. Tenth comment was why aren't all the easement areas hatched consistently? Basically, to clearly delineate easements on all sheets. Eleven was please forward a copy of the signed easement agreement with the Rico property owners, that's the Little Joe's property owners for cross-access. Twelve was please note that the town will require filter inserts to remove fuel, oil, grease for inlets collecting runoff from the gas station area. These must be installed once the site has been stabilized and prior to operation in the fuel center. And then thirteen, a plat will be required prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy to establish cross-lot access easements and other new or modified easements associated with this PCD development. So that's the staff's comments on that. If anybody has any, any questions once the discussion is initiated. Have any citizen comments on this?
We'll start with a motion.
Yes.
We'll move, Commissioner Myers.
Second.
I got the message right there.
Okay.
The applicant, someone with the applicant here?
Mark Bolick, 1313 Kellmia Road, Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm here to answer any and all questions. We have reviewed through the comments and have no objections to any of them.
Mayor Williams will start off then, if that's okay with everybody. If you come to agreement with Little Joe's guy about the
I can answer that we have provided the, a draft of the reciprocal cross-access agreement to them as of two days ago. I know that the, I've had conversation with Laura and their, their family is having a Zoom meeting, probably as we're speaking right now, to go over and give some feedback on it. We are working with them to get the easement as quick and as fast as possible.
Okay. I know we discussed this with staff and I was curious a while back, so, okay. You don't see an issue?
At this moment, no. I'm sure there's going to be some back and forth between the developer and the family. There always is. But I'm sure we can make some arrangements that everything, that everybody agrees to.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
Commissioner Dick, when the representative was here last, he said grocery carts would be kept outside. Is that still the plan?
Believe the representatives of the grocery store online, I'll let them answer that question.
This is Stephen Spangler with the Cavat Food Stores. Our, our grocery carts are in the vestibule, they will not be stored outside.
Could you give us your name again and address, please, a business address?
Yes, ma'am, Stephen, Stephen Spangler, Vice President, Real Estate and Site Development for Cavat Food Stores, One Food City Circle, Abingdon, Virginia.
Thank you. Anybody else having questions on the applicant or from Mark? Or does the applicant have anything he wishes to say?
Just Commissioner Green. Back on the topic that Mark mentioned with the image of the fuel, refueling island. Don't we have a palette of colors that, that
Yes.
fit in with our architectural design? And have, should we put a note in there that the coloring of that island is consistent with our palette?
There's some colors that appear to be relatively close to that. And so, yeah, that would be fine if that's the commission's recommendation on that. They should be able to find something that would be pretty close to that. It's hard to tell sometimes on these, these copies, these images, if they're Sometimes they end up better in the field than they looked on the image and sometimes worse. But it looked a little, kind of a little bit bright to me. So that's why I just pointed out, just to get your all's input and but the architectural design standards has a color palette and it has a number system that you can tie the colors back to. So I would say, I would ask the applicant to look at that and see what they can come up with that would fit in with one of those comparable colors. If that's what the commission would like to add as a comment.
That's what I'm suggesting, only to be consistent between applicants so that, that they're all reading from the same sheet of music. So I would amend, I would recommend we amend the motion to add a note that the coloring of the island is consistent with our architectural color palette.
This is Stephen again, that's not a problem. I think this is a stock image. It was the intent was really to show the, the brick treatments on, on the building so we can absolutely adapt the canopy to meet your standards.
Mark, who made the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say Commissioner Myers made the motion and Commissioner Dick seconded. And so if they wouldn't mind to amend that, if they want to.
Mr. Myers will amend his motion that the color palette's consistent with our, our stock standard colors.
Commissioner Dick, seconded the motion.
Color palette, yeah, okay. Do you want me to, once they send a revision, just email it out to? Or I can report on it, I guess, next month too, that's fine. If that would be all right, I don't, we don't need to discuss it, I could just send it out for information purposes.
That would be good, Mark, please.
Okay. All right, so I added that as an item number 14, the colors. I guess the colors, you know, in general, just need to make sure they I don't, I'm not concerned about the retail buildings, but I'm not sure, the Food City Building and the gas area, just to make, just make sure that there is, the colors do match some color in our adopted color palette that's comparable.
Any other questions or comments for either Mark or the applicant?
Okay, with that, I will go through a roll call based on the amended motion. And that would be subject to the 14 remaining comments. Commissioner Holliday or Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Commissioner Green, aye.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams, aye.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Aye.
Mr. Russ.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin.
Vice Mayor Povlin, aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
And the motion passes by vote of nine to zero.
I'd like to thank the applicants for joining us tonight. We'll move on now to item number seven. Discussion in public hearing on a rezoning of property situated around the eastern intersection of Mcfee Road and Boyd Station Road. From general single-family residential R-2 to open space mixed residential. We have parcels 50, 54.01, 54.01, and 9.01, tax number 162 at 12611 Boyd Station Road. That's from general single-family residential R-2 to open mixed, open space mixed residential, R-1 OSMR. 131.25 acres, OBO Homestead Land Holdings, applicant.
Okay, and I will have, do have one citizen comment I'll get to after I go through, after y'all make a motion to start discussion. But just as an overview of this, this was workshopped back in November and they requested a postponement last month. It involves actually four separate tracks that, obviously a very large piece of property in the southwest part of the town. There's a parcel, there's actually two areas that front on Mcfee Road to the west. And then there's a parcel that extends all the way over to Virtue Road to the east. But by and large, most of the property fronts along Boyd Station Road to the south. They actually have about 3,000 linear feet of frontage on Boyd Station Road. The property is basically a farm and has been a farm for a long time. It has a transmission line easement through part of it. Let me see if I can highlight this. The easement, actually, it comes through from Virtue Road. And then it drops down due south to Boyd Station and runs along Boyd Station Road, comes back up to the substation on Mcfee Road. Then there's a secondary distribution line, overhead distribution line that runs south of the transmission line along Boyd Station Road, really close to Boyd Station Road, actually. That would have to be addressed as part of the development of the property. So basically, the, the property, they're requesting, it's all zoned currently, general single-family residential R2. They're requesting R1 OSMR. OSMR is the open space mixed residential that allows for both attached and detached single-family. Similar to what you see in the northwest of this, to the cottages at Price Farm Development there. But pretty much the remainder of the existing development that abuts the property is, is either low-density residential or very low-density residential or almost really agricultural in nature. So let me go to a couple of other slides here. Look at some of these other, this is an aerial image that kind of highlights the area in relation to the existing conditions out there. And then the requested rezoning exhibit. In terms of what they're requesting in relation to, as we always do at the staff level, anytime someone requests rezoning, you know, we look at what the future land use map and the text of the plan call for, for that action. In this area, future land use map, as you see here, is, does show the area's open space cluster, which either the OSR, which is just detached, single-family, open space, or the OSMR, which as I said earlier, allows for detached and attached, would be consistent with future land use map. So it, you know, the, the request is, is consistent with the cottages at Price Farm, but, but probably not nearly as consistent with the remainder of the surrounding plan of development. Yet basically, any development on this, this property is going to require an improvement to Boyd Station Road for sure, because it does not meet our current minimum standards provided for in the subdivision regulations. So it would have to be improved to the standards of the complete street cross-section for their half of that road. And that basically calls for a 12-foot lane, a minimum six-foot grass strip, eight-foot walking trail, four-foot back lane. Those things, that's not really necessarily relevant at this point, but it's just something that, that will become relevant later when the property is developed. So basically, any action that's taken in relation to the rezoning would have to be conditioned on the plat being submitted to the planning commission and approved. To combine the lots because to rezone to O S R or O S M R, the lot has to be at least five acres. And a couple of these lots are less than five acres. So they would have to be combined concurrent with the rezoning and, and really couldn't be, rezoning couldn't be finalized beyond first reading until the plat was approved that combines these lots. So that's kind of an overview of what the request is at this time. The resolution that's in the packet, P C dash twenty one dash oh one recommends approval of ordinance twenty one dash oh four. To rezone property from R two to R one O S M R. One other thing, just as you may remember, there was an O S M R request for property on the west side of McPhee Road several months ago. Basically, in this area, Gibson Tract, and it had a overhead utility transmission line easement that ran through kind of the north end of part of that property. It was recommended for approval by the planning commission, but did not pass at the board of mayor and ottoman level. Because there was a desire to have the detached housing product, product for that particular tract. Now, this property obviously is much larger than that one. And so, you know, it's not necessarily comparing the same, but I do, will point that out, just as a little history on this particular zoning district in the area. So with that, that's all that I have as far as an introduction to this item.
I'm gonna move to approve.
Second. Second.
Commissioner Dick, second.
And I do have, as I mentioned, one comment that has been submitted by a citizen on this. So if you want, I'll go ahead and read that into the record.
Please, Mark, go ahead.
This comment is from Steve Williams. Trying to see if I find the address. Yeah, I know he's on Virtue Road, I can't remember. Anyway, please add my previous email comments and these revised comments to the planning commission review tonight, eleven seventeen twenty. We could support this rezoning to R one O S M R with these conditions, restrictions included in the zoning approval. To then be reflected and included in the restrictions, concept and design plan and final plating. A, any multifamily zero lot line homes segment shall occur only on the western section of the parcel that borders the Price Farm multifamily community. Running down to Boyd Station Road with no multifamily zero lot line homes constructed within thousand linear feet of land zoned agriculture. Our forty four acres is zoned agriculture, as is the Forrester Development west of us. B, buffer strip, open space of not less than two hundred feet wide by the total length of our adjoining property. Two property lines zoned agricultural shall be planned, designed into the new community separating agriculture zoned land from this new R one O S M R parcel. With said parcel, with said buffer, to be used only as open space. Buffer strip open space shall not be included as part of a lot and shall, and shall have no roads or buildings on or in the buffer strip open space. Our quiet, slower side of Faragut is and has always been rural, open area with large, single family lots and small farms for some thirty years. We have owned our farm. Town can preserve this community's heritage with large, open space buffers, limiting any multifamily to adjoining the existing multifamily zero lot line Price Farm as described above. This will soften the impact of these two hundred and eighty, three hundred and fifty new homes on our rural way of life. Additionally, it is not appropriate to plan multifamily attached units or small zero lot lines, homes near agricultural land where lots are one to five acres or more. Previous email that was sent, eleven nineteen twenty twenty. I would like to request mine and my wife's views be included in the discussion of rezoning request for Boyd Station Road parcel. One sixty at twelve six eleven Boyd Station Road that adjoins our forty four acre farm. We have enjoyed raising our family in Faragut for the last thirty years on our small farm with many animals and open space. Three of our four children have chosen to make Faragut their home with their own children. The town with its well thought out, with well thought, outgrowth planning and citizen involvement have made Faragut a great place to live, work. We view the R one O S M R zone as a better planning zone than the current R two for this property for the following reasons. O S one, O S M R will allow for more open space buffer strips, thirty five percent of the total acres. Hundred and thirty one at thirty five percent is about forty, eight point eight five acres of open space. It can be placed adjoining our agricultural zone farm and other neighbors that sit on large lots and acreage. Additional acres of open space will protect our current residents who mostly live on large spacious lots. This will soften the impact of plus or minus two hundred and eighty five homes. R one O S M R, second thing, will lower traffic and school impact. With two hundred and eighty five homes versus three hundred and eighty homes at the current R two zone. Design, three designing buffers more practical with O S M R with its smaller lot sizes. This can give more spacing and protection to the neighborhoods adjoining this parcel. In conclusion, we would currently support this rezoning to R one O S M R with these conditions, restrictions included in the approval. A, the multifamily section shall occur only on the western section of the parcel that borders Price Farm multifamily community. Shall not be within a thousand feet of land zoned agriculture. And B, buffer strip open space of not less than two hundred feet wide by total length of our adjoining property lines. Shall be planned into the new community separating agricultural zone land from this new R one O S M R parcel. With said buffer to be used only as open space. Buffer strip open space shall not be included as part of a lot and shall not have roads or buildings on or in the buffer strip open space. Thank you for your time and opportunity to be involved in our community. Couple of things that was noted in this is the fact that as far as the total number of lots, it's, they could have potentially more lots built under the current zoning than what they're requesting. It's just that they required a lot more open space with what they're requesting. So if you took the acreage and you just kind of multiplied it by the minimum lot size. In the O S M R, the density's based on a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. With, as I mentioned, at least thirty five percent of the total tract in permanent open space. So that equates to about two hundred and eighty five lots. Though you probably couldn't come anywhere close to this under the current R two zoning, theoretically, three hundred and eighty one lots. Again, you know, you couldn't come anywhere close to that because you have to deduct the open space, which is ten percent in R two, plus at least fifteen percent of the land to infrastructure. So it would probably be pretty comparable to what you would see with the O S M R as far as the total number of lots. So just to give you that as a little bit of background related to the density as it would affect this property. So that's all I have on it. I don't have any other citizen comments on this item.
Do we have the applicant with us?
Yes, this is Russ Rackley. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, P O box three zero four five six, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven nine three zero. Here representing Homestead Land Holdings as the applicant.
Thank you, Russ. Do you have any statement you want to make before we get into questioning?
No, I, I, you know, I'll just reiterate what, what we discussed in, in, in November. And I appreciate y'all allowing the postponement with, on the December meeting with the holidays and the, the, the COVID surge and all that. We just wanted to push it out where everybody could be available. But ultimately, we, this is a large piece of property. And as I've stated multiple times in our previous discussions, where O S M R is, is to give us the opportunity to maximize the, the highest and best use of this property. To create a comprehensive community with, with what we're desiring about three different housing options. One being attached housing and then two different lot size models of detached housings to create housing choice and housing option in this sector of Faragut. And that is why we're seeking this zoning. And as Mark, Mark mentioned, obviously, the, the open space zoning, either of the two options within Faragut. Requires a significant amount of, of land to be placed in open space, protected for green space for the town. So we think this is the best use of this property and, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Commissioner Holliday, can I go first?
Okay, go ahead.
Have some thoughts on this. As you all know, we approved the previous property that they asked to rezone to O S M R. And it did not get, it did not get approval at the board, board level. And one of the concerns presented at the board level is with O S M R, they had no control over where or the ratio of attached to detached. So I know that the applicant had sent us a proposed concept plan that Mark distributed to us. Where it focuses where they want to put their, their attached, uh, single family. There's an, obviously, there's an L C U B station located, well, right there, Mark, can you show where the L C U B station is? So they're, they're proposing that that would probably be a very good location for attached, single family, which makes sense to me. And then they have a small portion up by the entrance in front of Boyd Station where we have no other development. So it, that would seem to be appropriate location as well. If I was going to amend my motion to, and I'm not sure if this is something we can do, Mark, restrict it to the O S M R to about thirty five percent of the property. That way we know that when it goes to the board level that we have some say over the amount of attached and detached. And of course, sixty five percent would be detached. I, I'm not sure if that would satisfy the board, but I know that there was concern about having some say over where everything would be. Mark, is that something we can do?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the planning commission and board can place a condition on rezoning to, you know, promote an objective of our comprehensive plan. Of course, our comprehensive plan does talk about providing for housing variety. And you can certainly place a, you know, a maximum number or percentage of lots that would be attached versus detached. If there's a concern related to that. It's just something that the applicant would either go with or they wouldn't. It's not a negotiation, it's just something that if you all feel that you need to have that to establish a breakdown of the attached versus detached. Then you can, you could recommend a condition on as part of the rezoning. The other option is to look at, for the longer term maybe, is to consider whether a concept plan needs to be provided in association with the rezoning for an O S M R. If they, let's say it's over a certain acreage, that's a longer term matter, but you could condition it in the short term. I will say that a concept plan is required for any O S R or O S M R subdivision development. And certainly at that point as well, the planning commission could, you know, they could deny a layout if they felt that it was inconsistent with the plan. And the surrounding plan of development, which I mentioned earlier, is pretty low density residential for the most part. The only exception is the cottages at Price Farm. And so otherwise, it's a pretty rural area. So short answer to your question is yes, you, you can do that. It just needs to be tied to, you know, an objective that is, you know, promoted in the plan.
Well, you know, that I, I approved of the last rezoning request because of, for those reasons, it was a challenging piece of land. I wonder if that had, had some restriction, if we had placed some restrictions on it, the board might have felt a little bit more comfortable about it. I, I'm, I'm, I think that this would be, this might help with their, their comfort level. I agree with you, in the long term, we may want to look at that because we do need a mix of housing. It's important that we're not just, we're using these last bits of land that we have left to develop. That we're trying to meet our, our goals of, of a greater housing choice. And certainly, townhomes seem to be the, the one missing piece that is in high demand. I know I have Ramsgate and Chapel Point in my, in, and the North Ward. And they don't even have to put their, their townhomes on the market. They just put a, a sign out in front and, and it sells. So that is much, very much in demand. This location would be really good. So I, I'm gonna amend my motion. Actually, I'd love to hear how the other commissioners feel about that before I amend my motion.
Let me, I would say one thing, if you're gonna place a condition on it, it, it's really up to you all. But you may want to do it by the number of lots. I mean, the allowed number of lots here is two eighty five, based on that twenty thousand square foot density. So, you know, whatever percentage or number of lots you feel, if you all want to do that. You feel it's appropriate to advance the plan and advance compatibility with the surrounding plan of development as well, which is part of our plan. That might be a little easier to tie it down.
I think it's not only just the number of, of the small attached lots, but it's also a local.
Yeah.
So when I amend my motion, I should include the number of lots as well as a general location? Is that what you're saying, Commissioner St. Clair?
Well, I think it's those two considerations and Mark was mentioning, you know, basically, you know, a plan, kind of an association with it. And we, we've seen this one concept, but if we rezone it without some consideration of the other two aspects that it could. I don't know, I, I trust Mr. Rackley, the other folks, but they will do change sometimes property, what have you. It, once we rezone it, it, it can morph around to something else. And. The general location shown in this view and, and well, and that's lock, the coverage and open space and what have you considerations, you know, looks pretty good. But it doesn't mean that we're, you know, that's the only plan that we, that might come back to us.
Commissioner Green? It seems like we would be able to address the location because we do get a concept plan as a part of the approval process for whatever goes in there. And that concept plan would have to address transitions and buffer zones and those kinds of things. So if we had those, uh, detached, or attached, excuse me, adjacent to other areas. We could invoke the transition requirements to make sure they were in areas that we felt they were satisfactory. So in summary, I think the concern we have, it could be addressed as, when we get into the approval. Now, we can make a note of that as a part of the, of this.
That's what I'm, I'm not saying to lock and load them, you know, like you're saying in the, in looking at the plan specifically, well, that's, day will come. But the fact that that is a. that is a part of the consideration right now is a part of this, then.
Understood.
So that the intent of what we're looking at is known.
I have a question. Mark or Russ, is the utility easement the only thing on this property? There's no topography issues of any kind, like sinkholes or anything like that?
Well, there are, there are some areas that are, that show up as depressions, whether they're actual sinkholes, all of them is, I don't know the answer to that, but there are some areas that on a USGS topo have a closed contour. So, but again, those are, you know, and I think this layout here, in my estimate, probably takes into consideration those, at least at this level of, you know, research and analysis on the property.
Mark, may I jump in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, to answer your question, Commissioner, there is one closed depression, which appears to be a manmade pond on the north west corner where there's a void kind of adjacent to Price Farms. And then all along Boyd Station in the southwest corner and then in the far southeast corner, there are closed contour lines. However, the road abutment there may have created that. We are currently surveying that to identify the location of any culverts, cross culverts under Boyd Station Road and/or the railroad to let that water out. And that's, of course, part of the progress through the development process before we submit final plans. But the layout does account for topographic features as well as the LCB transmission line, overhead transmission line easements and other items to, again, try to best facilitate the property. And I just want to reiterate again, from my perspective as an engineer and having dealt with this for these types of situations for a long time and what staff Shipley said, that regardless of the zoning, this zoning that we're asking requires this commission to approve a concept plan. And at the concept level, the commission has every right to exert their influence or desires on both the location and the number of attached housing as it relates to the adjoining parcels and can absolutely deny a plan if there's, whether it's us or somebody else, if it's, if they feel like it no longer meets the definition of mixed, as it would apply to this parcel in this area of the town of Farragut. So again, we're way ahead. We typically don't ever do a layout before we get rezoning. There's a lot of time and expense spent in that. But this is a very large and important piece of property, not only to the town of Farragut, but also to Saddle Brook, the home builder that'll be building out here. And we really want what's best for the piece of property and the town of Farragut.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right. I'm going to amend my motion to move to rezone.
Somebody else have a question first, Louise?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor Williams. What Russ just said, that's, I hope everybody understands that. What they've got grown up here is just a drawing, but it may not, I mean, I wouldn't want anybody to think that what we're looking at is what we're knowing necessarily. The percentage and location is definitely something that needs to be looked at. Probably once Russ and them get a little bit better handle on the lay of the land as far as depressions and things to that nature, I think it would be probably a little bit more closer to the point of saying these areas could be this and another area should be that. Certainly, when you look at this piece of, this parcel of land, it really don't much back up to anything that's laid out now, other than Price Farm and then also to the residential that's along, the fee and ends up near the residential, the rest of the residential that's on Boyd Station. So I think with a little bit of imagination, as far as the layout, it can be plausible to the two areas that actually has a single family residential area. So that's, that's all I have to say, I guess.
Anybody else?
Russ can probably jump in there if you like.
No, no, I agree, Mayor Williams. Now, obviously, I'm pretty meticulous in what I do, even though this is early stage, it's still high level topography from aerial. It's six pixel LiDAR, it's plus or minus six inches. So it's pretty accurate and I don't like to do things twice. So I laid it out to the best of my ability to meet every physical requirement as well as Town of Farragut zoning and subdivision regulation requirement. That's not saying that, there won't be some comments when it evolves into a full blown conceptual package and preliminary plat down the road. But I think it's pretty, I feel like I've hit the nail pretty square on the head as far as the best use of this property, given the implied constraints. But, but no, I agree. I mean, we, that my clients, Homestead Land Holdings and Saddle Brook, they, you know, they want a mix of housing choices, but as I said in November, we have zero intention of doing, you know, 60 or 80% attached housing. We want some attached, but mostly detached. It's really just an opportunity to take this parcel and create enough units to support some wonderful open space and amenities and clubhouse and pool and all the things that go along with, with the communities that we develop. So my only point was, and I understand the commission's position as well as the board, if and when we get to there, that once you rezone it, it's rezoned. I was just wanting to iterate that regardless of what you're looking at today, even if you rezone it, nothing can move forward on this property without this body's approval. And so any plan has to come back before this planning commission for review and approval. And that's where you have the opportunity to exert your will to try to influence the location and the amount of attached units and location and amount of detached units and road geometry, et cetera, et cetera, as it relates to the land and to this part of Farragut. So I just appreciate y'all's consideration for this. This is an important piece of property and we have every intention of moving full speed ahead, assuming that we get the approvals along the way as required, that we meet the requirements of the Town of Farragut, to try to make what is going to be a really amazing community subdivision within the Farragut community. Thank you.
This is Ed St. Clair. Russ, thank you. You've made the point a lot clearer than what I was trying to make earlier. Thinking about the concept, it would be our day to look at that. So I appreciate you clarifying that for everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
This is, this is.
Any more questions?
Go ahead, Louise.
Commissioner Myers has a question. Well, it's not really not a question, it's more of a statement. Chairman Reed, are you okay for me to go?
Yes, go. Go ahead, Mark.
I just want everybody, I agree with what Louise said and can kind of support that with a lot of empirical evidence. There is a tremendous amount of demand for zero lot line or attached housing, and I really do support that. I mean, quite frankly, if it's appropriate, I'd like to see more than 20 or 30%. I do think that is a housing need that is unmet in the Town of Farragut, and I also think this would help us achieve some of our objectives and provide more of a variety of housing choices.
Any more questions or comments? All right. I'm still going to think that we struggled with the Board of Mayor and Alderman, so I'm going to amend my motion to restrict the, approve R1 OSMR with 35% or, I'm sorry, that comes out to about 100 lots, 100 attached, single family. And so whatever the remainder of that, what is 200, 185, single family detached, a portion of it proximate the LCB station and a portion proximate the entrance off Boyd Station. That's my amended motion. Who seconded it?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dick has had seconded it. If she wants to second that again, that amended motion.
Under.
Now, one other thing to note is that the plat, as I mentioned earlier, is a staff subject to, that would have to be, they do have to combine those lots because we can't rezone any parcels that are less than five acres to this zoning district.
And is subject to, to combine the plats.
Yeah. Okay. So the motion was to restrict the total number of attached, single family, or place a condition on rezoning of no more than 100 attached, single family units, or 35% of the overall dwelling unit count. And to situate those approximately near the LCB substation area and along part of Boyd Station Road. And then also to combine the four lots into one parcel through a plat to be approved by the Planning Commission.
Discuss the motion for a minute with Louise. We seem to be not disregarding the concept plan as the opportunity to look at the location. I can understand your number of lots, maybe with the, how you're dealing with the board, but you did go ahead and include location.
I did. Well, that was your suggestion, but.
Well, I was, I thought I was misunderstood because I thought, I was trying to make the point that the concept plan could do, you know, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned.
Yeah.
And then the concept plan would, you know, kind of lock and load where, you know, that approval would be mostly locked, the number of lots as well as location.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just trying to figure out what's going to make the board comfortable. I know what we're comfortable with as far as, I would be perfectly fine with the concept plan. In fact, I think in the long range, what the board would be most comfortable with is if we required a concept plan approval. But that's not going to work for tonight. So I'm just trying to put it in a perspective where the board would feel comfortable with those two locations because they do make sense. And then we need to address this separately for the long term if we're going to look for OSMR because the opportunity for the Thompson Farm is out there looming for some day, and I can't see us doing all single family detached on the Thompson Farm either. So I think the long term fix is a, is a concept plan requirement, but I think for short term, the motion I made, I think, has the opportunity of most success at the board level, I guess is why I did that.
Williams, I disagree.
Okay.
I think when you start to put location in, I think that's not really what we need to do at this point.
So you want me to put location then?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put location in at this point. I think I would let it be a little bit later.
Okay, then I'll just, I'll reamend my motion. Move for approval, R1 OSMR with 100 lots and a combination of the parcels. Commissioner Dick, will you second that?
That's a 100 lot attached, correct?
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have that, Mark?
I've got that, yep. I've got that with the, and I think we all are under the understanding that the location would be something that would be evaluated if it gets rezoned to by the concept plan that would be submitted to the Planning Commission for the subdivision itself. So, but again, I've got the motion. Let me go ahead and go through the roll call. Vote on the motion by Vice Mayor Povlin and second by Commissioner Dick. Chairman Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Commissioner Green, aye.
Commissioner St. Clair?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Mayor Williams, aye.
Commissioner Bellamy?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Povlin?
Vice Mayor Povlin, aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay, and the motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. This will be moved on to the Board of Mayor and Alderman in February.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we move on to item number eight, discussion on a zoning map amendment request for the property referenced as parcel 069, tax map 142, north of Old Ingalls Building, Ingalls Building, 20 acres to change the zoning from R-1 rural, single family, rural, single family residential to R-6 multifamily residential home properties incorporated applicant.
Okay, this item is just for workshop discussion purposes, this and the next item, and I do have some comments, and I'll read into the record after giving overview of this. This is the property that is just to the north of the Old Ingalls Building, it fronts on Boring Road. The property, like I said, to the east is Boring Road, to the west is the Village Commons Senior Living Community. To the north, it's undeveloped area, open field, and of course, to the south, the Old Ingalls Building. And that's basically where the property is situated. The property is currently, let me get my, this is existing zoning out there. Property is currently almost all R1 rural, single family residential. And that particular district requires, as I mentioned under the previous item, a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, which equates to a little over two units per acre. The request for this property is to go to the R6 multifamily residential zoning district, which does allow up to 12 dwelling units per acre. As I mentioned with the previous item, when a rezoning comes to the staff's level, initially we reference our plan, both the future land use map text provided for in the plan and look at the surrounding plan of development. As you all probably remember, you know, the plan was updated and maps were added in 2012. We had an original plan that was adopted back in 2001. It's mostly a policy statement plan. And when the plan was updated in 2012, different parts of the towns were mapped for different future land uses. And this area was designated as medium density residential, which at that time provided for a density range of six to 12 dwelling units per acre. After working with the plan and the map on a number of projects since 2012, it was pretty apparent that there were some things that needed to be adjusted in both the map and the text and revisited. So we created a steering committee. So we created a steering committee to help us focus, to help the staff basically focus on the plan. And what we did is looked at a number of priority areas, um, in the town where we really wanted to try to, uh, foster the future development, uh, in those areas. And, uh, so the first area that we looked at was the Watt Road Corridor, North Watt Road. We had a public workshop in March of two thousand and eighteen. It was very well attended and we received a lot of feedback from the residents there and others. And, uh, I had a follow-up of that meeting's input and the committee's recommendation based on the, what they heard at the meeting, uh, and previous working with the plan. Uh, at the September, uh, twentieth, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting, in one aspect of the plan that kept coming back, and we heard from residents that had a concern about it, uh, at the Watt Road Workshop, was that the medium-density residential land use was just simply too broad in the density range. And then also in the description of the types of residential, um, you know, structures that you could have in that density, it was kind of all over the place. So, um, so basically, um, what, uh, was recommended by the steering committee based on the feedback from the public was that the medium-density residential land use would be broken down into, um, basically it would be six to eight dwelling units per acre. And then a new land use would be provided for those existing constructed densities in excess of eight units per acre, and that would be high-density residential. And that would affect, um, Lanesborough and the Overlook Project, both of which have densities over eight, uh, units per acre. And, uh, basically, that recommendation was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission at their meeting on, uh, October eighteenth, twenty eighteen. So, uh, all the properties, um, that were designated as medium-density residential would now be, uh, at the six to eight units per acre as far as the recommended density. And if someone wanted to request something beyond that, they would have to, uh, request an amendment to the future land use map for high-density residential. And then that request would be evaluated based on its merits, uh, based on the surrounding plan of development, um, for that area and any other, you know, relevant information associated with the request. So the request at this time, um, for the R six, which is a multifamily district that allows up to twelve dwelling units per acre, is inconsistent with the medium-density land use that's on this property. And, uh, basically, when the property, you, you know, if it were rezoned to R six, um, you basically could put a product on that twenty acres that could be up to twelve dwelling units per acre when the land use plan caps it at eight. So, uh, when we talked about this at the staff developer meeting on January the seventh, there was some mention, uh, noted about the fact that the applicant tends to place a deed restriction, uh, on their development, uh, that would basically target the product to, um, individuals over the age of fifty. And that certainly, I'm not questioning that that's not the intent of the applicant, but we, the town can't really enforce deed restrictions. And, you know, I would be a little bit concerned about, you know, if the market weren't there for a property that had a deed restriction on it and what that would mean and the potential for, um, you know, vacancy in the structure and potentially not being properly maintained as a result. So, but basically, the request at this time is just not consistent with the future land use map for this property, uh, so the staff could not support the request, uh, as it's currently presented. And I do have quite a few comments, um, that once you all initiate the discussion, then I will read into the record.
So at this point, Mark, we need a motion?
Motion and a second to, to start the discussion, yep.
This is Commissioner.
Actually, I'm sorry, this is a workshop, I apologize.
Workshop, we're not.
You're right, no. I'm, I'm on track with the other stuff, my apologies, we don't need to do that. I guess I will go ahead though, and, um, if it's okay with the commission and read into the record.
I think that's a problem, Mark.
And then we can, uh, have the applicant present their request, uh, and then commissioners can, um, react to that. Uh, basically, I'm gonna read into the record, uh, a number of comments that were actually submitted for agenda items eight and nine, uh, both of which are rezonings, um, that are interrelated. Uh, there will be some that I will read into the record only under agenda item number nine, uh, but many of these were submitted under both, and I will read them, uh, at this time under this particular agenda item. So I will start with Mary Mayer at four one nine Bernie Circle. My name is Mary Mayer, and I reside at four one nine Bernie Circle in the Baldwin Park subdivision. I respect what you are trying to do, but there is great incompatibility with the land use plan. There appear to be a lack of large buffers to protect our existing neighborhood and a large disparity between land use designation like high-density land use close to low-density. We are terribly concerned about traffic congestion, especially in the Grigsby Chapel Smith Road. There are problems now with the never-ending traffic lights on Kingston Pike. And what we really need now is smaller, single-family or townhomes or condos. We have a beautiful and unique neighborhood, and we are aware of your needs. However, they are extremely incompatible with our needs in the surrounding community. My request is that you seriously consider my request, along with many others in this beautiful community. Second comments from John Holstreger, uh, at three four five Bernie Circle. Dear M P C, uh, I object to the proposed rezoning associated with agenda items eight and nine, but I will spare you the litany of concerns raised by other citizens. I have a different issue to raise. I have been a big part of the opposition to what Doug Horn is attempting with apartment construction starting six years ago and his proposed Continental Properties Development behind Ingalls. I was disrespectful to Doug and continental and somewhat adversarial with town government in two thousand and fifteen, and I wish to apologize for that. I took the wrong approach. I think we are fortunate to have Doug Horn in Farragut. I listened with interest during the January seven developer meeting and was impressed with all the ways Doug has contributed to our town, which caused me to think, how do we make the best use of Doug's talent, his time and resources for the good of Farragut? To Doug, I would say, it's clear the town and its people do not want more apartments. You have beautiful parcels of land that are strategically located. With the resources you have, you can, uh, be an even greater contributor to the town. We appreciate you. And then I'd ask the question, would you consider focusing your energy on developments other than apartments that are really needed? To town leaders, I would say, you're largely a volunteer workforce in a, in your time, it's valuable. You have all been through the woods and weeds on the issue of apartments. I'm sure you're worn out with hearing the negative feedback and emotions of people who don't want what apartments bring to the town. And then I'd ask the question, what is really needed in Farragut other than apartments that property owners and developers could build for us that would offer an acceptable profit margin? Said differently, rather than have developers constantly rolling the dice and using up their resources and resources of the town to create proposals that might or might not fly. Could we instead give developers a list of projects that Farragut needs and wants and have them focus energy on those projects that we know are already in alignment with land use plans? Hopefully, I haven't opened a bigger can of worms, but I think we are all worn out with years of arguing over apartments that Farragut does not want. Next comment is from Ron Smith at five thirty-two Wyndham Hall Lane. One comments reference item eight on the agenda, discussion on zoning map amendment. Basically, references the caption. My name is Ron Smith, a thirty-year town resident, and I have appeared before Farragut Municipal Planning Commission on behalf of the Wyndham Hall subdivision on several occasions, primarily to ask the commission to address the increasing traffic problems on Grigsby Chapel Road, specifically the impact of new subdivisions transitioning to the Everett Road, Smith Road, Grigsby Chapel Road corridor and increasing the already high volume of traffic, obviously outside of the pandemic period. Speeding, especially from Retsch Road to Campbell Station Road, the continuation of adding additional entrances directly onto Grigsby Chapel Road, and the safety of schoolchildren waiting for school buses. Those short-term and long-term suggestions were proposed. However, the traffic congestion and safety concerns remain. Therefore, I strongly impose this proposal to rezone from R one to R six, which does not appear to be consistent with the town's land use plan. Additionally, I oppose item number nine, proposal to rezone a portion of the area currently zoned R one and R two to R six, and to rezone a portion of the property currently zoned R two to R four for the same traffic congestion issues for the town as a whole. Next comment is from Gregory Gibson, one one nine zero seven Appleton Way. This email is in reference to number eight, is Old Ingalls' proposal to rezone R two to R six. And number nine, Ford property proposal to rezone to R six. I would like to respectfully express my concern and distress at the potential of rezoning in our area, reference number eight and number nine above. The utilities and infrastructure currently in place is marginally meeting the current demands placed on it by current residents and businesses. Uh, any significant changes will make these systems unable to meet the needs of the residents of Farragut. This is in addition to unacceptable traffic congestion. Current traffic congestion in the area is already at an unacceptable level, especially with new condos and develop, and neighborhoods currently being built. Please do not ruin our neighborhoods and drive property values down. We retire to this location. Please do not make that mistake by making this a much less desirable area to live in. I wholly agree with my neighbors. In addition, there will be incompatibility with the land use plan, a lack of large buffers to protect existing neighborhoods, large disparity between land use designation like high-density, very close to low-density, continuing traffic congestion with no way to resolve it, especially in the Grigsby Chapel, Smith Road corridor, never-ending traffic lights on Kingston Pike, crime, school impact, plenty of apartments have here already. What we really need is smaller, single-family or townhome condo, et cetera. Please reject number eight, Old Ingalls' proposal to rezone to R six, and number nine, Ford proposal to rezone to R six. Thank you for taking into account our concerns. Next comment is from Diane Gibson. One one nine zero seven, Appleton Way. My husband and I recently moved into Farragut, Waverly Court. Farragut has a reputation above its surrounding cities, which is the main reason for our move to Farragut. We told friends that we were moving to Farragut, their eyes lit up, and they made remarks such as how lucky we were to be moving to a great and prideful city. I have concerns for the above-mentioned land proposals, which I would like to add to your consideration. First, traffic and the congestion that it would cause on both Boring Road and Smith Road is unacceptable. Boring Road is not wide enough for all of the traffic that would ensue due to addition of apartments. It will be nearly impossible for residents to exit Boring Road and make a left onto Kingston Pike in a timely manner, which would then cause a backup of traffic waiting to get out onto Kingston Pike. If apartment residents should want to go forwards, to go towards Smith Road in order to get to a light to turn onto Kingston Pike, it will put a lot of traffic onto Smith Road and hence back up the light at Kingston Pike and Smith Road, which is a short green light for Smith Road. Second, property value, I'm concerned that our property value will decrease with the addition of these apartments. Uh, property values in Farragut are a bit higher than surrounding areas due to the reputation of Farragut. As stated above, Farragut is a desirable location in which to live. I believe apartments will decrease the desire, make Farragut just like any other city. Third, crime, the addition of all the residents. Thank you for all you do to keep our city beautiful. Next comment is from Jane Bientima, two thirty-five Forum Way. Please vote no for apartments behind Ingalls and Ford property and any others. We already have apartments in Farragut, and adding more would overload all utilities, electric, gas, water, and wastewater, probably cable. Roads would have to be constructed or widened, and the town would have to pay for that. More traffic lights would have to be installed, and we already have plenty of those. Also, our schools will be overloaded. Is the town ready to build new schools? Neighborhoods next to these apartments would have the value of their homes go down. Would you like to have the value of your home go down? Uh, the next comment is, are from two, it's the same people, same comment from two individuals. Uh, Scott West at one one six one eight Channing Lane. He was the vice president of Wyndham Hall subdivision, H O A. And Vincent Meyer at one one five one five Benwick Lane, who's the president of Wyndham Hall subdivision, H O A. Attention, Farragut Municipal Planning Committee. I'm at reference item eight, and again, it's the caption of item eight. This communication is being submitted jointly by Vincent Meyer, president of Wyndham Hall subdivision, H O A, residing at one one five one five Benwick Lane, Farragut, Tennessee, three seven nine three four. Scott West, vice president, Wyndham Hall subdivision, H O A, residing at one one six one eight Channing Lane, Farragut, Tennessee, three seven nine three four. We would like to express our deep concern about the high volume of traffic on Grigsby Chapel Road, impact of new subdivisions and multifamily developments transitioning to the Everett Road, Smith Road, Grigsby Chapel Road corridor. And increasing the already high volume of traffic will present hazardous ingress and egress for all neighborhoods along this corridor. We are confident changing the zoning in order to allow apartments north of the Old Ingalls will further add to traffic congestion, safety concerns, which are shared by many of the homeowners in Wyndham Hall subdivision. We strongly oppose the proposal to rezone the parcel of land north of the Old Ingalls Building from R one to R six because of the traffic issues referenced above, and because we believe it is not consistent with the town of Farragut's land use plan. Also, we oppose item number eight, nine, excuse me, proposal to rezone a portion of the area currently zoned R one and R two to R six, and to rezone a portion of property currently zoned R two to R four, because it will significantly contribute to the already high traffic congestion in the town of Farragut. Next comment is from George Cooper, George and Susan Cooper at five, excuse me, three twenty-five Bernie Circle. Guiding item number eight, we are opposed to rezoning of this property to accommodate development for multifamily apartments. Property is adjacent to and across some single-family residential developments, and do not believe that rezoning for multifamily development apartments is compatible with the single-family neighborhoods around it. Our understanding after the first, after the last round on this same rezoning issue was that our sector would be invited to participate with the town in working, in a working meeting to gather residents' input and comments on Farragut C O U P. The current land use plan has previously been identified by the tenant's citizens as in dire need of updating. This process of gathering and considering citizen inputs and comments and updating the C O U P accordingly has not been followed through by the town. The land use plan should be the horse before the cart, and its updating process. the cart and its updating process followed through with prior, with prior to considering any rezoning actions. Right now, rezoning in a sector without that sector's land use plan being updated would be the cart before the horse. Even more so related to the parcel behind the Old Ingalls up for rezoning, the land use plan should be updated to recognize that this parcel is surrounded by single family developments and the parcel most likely shown is single family residential. We relocated to Farragut from North City in 2019 trusting and expecting that the town will follow through with its commitment to careful consideration of the compatibility and impacts on the community of proposed developments, and be diligent in collecting and addressing citizen input and comments in the review of rezoning requests. We are dependent on the town MPC and governance to make the right decision. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments." Next comment is from Stephen Canich and Llosia Decanich at 435 Bernie Circle. "To whom it may concern, the Decaniches are vehemently opposed to the apartment rezoning proposal. Agenda item number eight, Old Ingalls' proposal to rezone to R6. We recently moved to Baldwin Park because of the peace, tranquility, and safety subdivision offered. We feel this apartment rezoning proposal is an egregious attack on our current living environment and feel, one, it will compromise our safety by adding a tremendous increase in traffic flow, two, infringe on the established buffer areas that provide protection to our subdivision, three, provide for an increased opportunity for crime, and four, devalue the worth of our property." The next comment is from Stephen Gilliam, 341 Bernie Circle. This email is in response to two items to be discussed in January 21, 2021 meeting. Farragut Municipal Planning Committee will discuss two rezoning requests for proposed construction of apartments. And basically, that's the agenda items eight and nine. The requirements and guidelines for the Farragut Municipal Planning Committee states the following. Strategy eight, plan for the remaining vacant parcels. Policy, densities of new development should be compatible with existing adjacent densities. Transitions, to protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible new development, and to encourage gradual transitions even within new development such as between blocks with different densities. Following guidelines should be applied. If a density different from an adjoining property is proposed, transition should occur within the proposed development, gradually increase or decrease away from the common boundary. For example, if a development, if a new development with a medium density designation were placed next to an existing low density neighborhood, single family homes should be placed along the common boundary with duplexes and townhomes placed further away from the existing neighborhood. This will create a gradual transition of density away from the common property line and make adjacent developments compatible. However, if the medium density was placed alongside a non-residential use, commercial or office, density could increase to match the intensity for that use. For example, a medium density residential development would fit next to office or commercial. Based on these guidelines, the proposed rezoning request will not meet the requirements for compatibility with the existing adjacent developments located with common boundaries to the proposed development. In my opinion, the proposal should be rejected. Thank you for your efforts in keeping the planned developments within the guidelines established." The next comment is from following residents who've signed on to comment that I'll read after I read their names, and that would be Donald and Sheila Scherer at 301 Bernie Circle, Robert and Diane Osborne, 309 Bernie Circle, Frederick and Marjorie Bloom, 316 Bernie Circle, Sharon Trotter, 324 Bernie Circle, Steve and Sharon Gilliam, 341 Bernie Circle, Joe and Chris Demaro, 349 Bernie Circle, Kathy Dupree, 400 Bernie Circle, Dave and Irene Rice, 407 Bernie Circle, Charles and Carol Lamond, 411 Bernie Circle, Mary Mayer, Meyer, 419 Bernie Circle, Jim and Kate Standifer, 430 Bernie Circle, Cal Marcia Scherer, 426 Bernie Circle, and Robin Buchanan at 348 Bernie Circle. "We, the residents of Baldwin Park subdivision, object for the following reasons," and this is in relation to agenda item eight. "One, incompatibility with the land use plan, lack of large buffers to protect existing neighborhoods, large disparity between land use designation like high density, very close to low density. Two, continuing traffic congestion with no way to resolve it, especially in the Griggsby Chapel-Smith Road corridor. Most folks in the fifties are still working, so there will be additional traffic on already congested roads. Boring Road is already a dangerous narrow road while with, will Boring Road be widened to accommodate additional traffic. Three, the need for never ending traffic lights on Kingston Pike. Four, potential for increased crime. Five, impact to school population. Six, we have plenty of apartments here already. Additional apartments will ultimately require the town to have its own police force. We request you do not approve the zoning change request." Next comment is from Marcia and Cal Scherer, 426 Bernie Circle. "We are very concerned and troubled about the proposed rezoning to R6 for the property it backs up to and surrounds our neighborhood. We bought our home in this area at a premium to have less congestion, noise, and density. Rezoning to high density is incompatible with the land use plan as we understood it. Also, the Griggsby Chapel-Smith Road corridor is overwhelmed already, and Boring Road is a country lane. Traffic congestion that would result from rezoning to higher density would be impossible to resolve. Also, adding so many more families to this area will certainly crowd Farragut schools and cause redistricting for current Farragut residents who bought in Farragut to attend Farragut schools. High density areas often tend to have higher crime rates. Another thing we considered in choosing our current neighborhood, which was protected by the zoning in the land use plan. We could have paid less for our home in more dense areas and less property tax. However, we chose our location on purpose. It is not fair to then have the planning commission rezone it negatively affecting existing homeowners. Please do not rezone to high density. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request." Next comment is from Elizabeth and Philip Calida, 228 Fordham Way. "We oppose the rezoning of both of these areas under consideration. We believe it would be," and this is eight and nine, "we believe it would be incompatible with the, with the land use plan. We live in Waverly Court and our condos never stay on the market long. In fact, when we bought ours not too long ago, it was extremely difficult to find townhomes and condos. One level single family homes are also in short supply. Apartments are not needed, and we feel that we, and we feel they would add to the already serious congestion at peak times on Smith Road and Griggsby Chapel, as well as Kingston Pike, which currently functions well with so many traffic lights. Farragut is a low crime area. It seems that crime in Knoxville is worse when the population becomes more dense. In addition, for almost a year we have lived during a pandemic, we don't know what Farragut will be like when we return to normal and current building projects are completed, and perhaps properties in the Ingalls Shopping Center will be leased. We don't think this is a good time for a change. We respectfully ask you to vote not to change the zoning for these parcels to R6." Next comment is from Gabriel Beath at 163 Federal Boulevard. "I'm writing to express my strong disapproval with the plan for an additional set of apartments at the property that behind Ingalls and the old Ford property on Kingston Pike. Please don't, please don't mistake that I'm anti-development. I'm against the poor planning that is going into this and the lack of realization of the impact of this on the people of Farragut. Traffic on Kingston Pike is becoming more and more unbearable. Sometimes one can wait four to five cycles to turn from Kingston Pike on to Campbell Station Road. Is, is another eight hundred apartments and the corresponding car is going to make this better? Look at the intersection of Campbell Station and I-40. This is a disaster. Is this going to get better? Are you going to put in more traffic lights? The town of Farragut can't even time the ones we have to move people effectively and safely. We are going to start becoming like the state of New Jersey or New York and California. Second, we need more open space. The parks we have are great, but getting too crowded. This is not a service to the community. We need more interconnected greenways and recreational opportunities. I would love for my kids to be able to cross Kingston Pike, but it is too dangerous at the various intersections due to the traffic. This needs addressed first. Third, the schools are already packed to the brim. Traffic around them is insane, poorly coordinated and directed. Is another eight hundred apartments going to make this better? And then fourth, these apartments don't fit within the town of Farragut's planning documents. This is a disservice to the community that will ultimately degrade the town. We don't, we don't want to look and feel like Chapman Highway in pursuit of a quick tax buck at the expense of long term planning." Next comment is from Stephen Oglesby, 270 Fordham Way. "I write to voice my opposition to the rezoning to allow apartments on the land behind the Old Ingalls store adjacent to Baldwin Park, Waverly Court, and across Boring Road from Village Green, and the Ford land running Kingston Pike between Glen Abbey and Park Place and across Kingston Pike from Glen Village Green. Apartments are not appropriate uses for these properties. They will increase traffic congestion and create unsafe driving conditions. Lower density developments call forth these locations. I understand the developers' desire to obtain a return on their investment, but apartments are not the answer when they create negative impacts for the existing community." Next comment is from Barbara Humphries, 11919 Burnside Place. "My concern with both items, items eight and nine, is the additional traffic that would be added to an already crowded Kingston Pike." Next comment is from Becky Mayberry, 402 Royal Burtdale Road. "Please keep the heart of Farragut a nice residential neighborhood slash community. There are already lots of apartments in town. Please don't be swayed into changing the zoning for the Biddle, Ford, or Boring Road properties. These are all in the heart of our town. Thank you." Next comment is from Richard Cataldi at 419 Bellfield Road, and from M. B. Stallings at 425 East Foxden Drive. "I live in Village Green, Foxden subdivision, and I object to both, to both of these proposals to change zoning in order to allow high density housing. In both cases, existing neighborhoods are not sufficiently protected with buffers and the proposed zoning is inconsistent with both the land use plan and the land use adjacent to the proposed development. We have a good land use plan. We'll stick to it instead of just throwing out more apartments where they don't belong. Farragut has plenty of apartments already. Adding more is going to cause further deterioration of an already bad traffic situation. It really has no good solution. The town has been laid out in such a way that heavily trafficked Campbell Station and Kingston Pike cannot be expanded further without destroying current businesses. Neither can Griggsby Chapel-Smith Road corridor. Anyone thinking that changing the school start times will alleviate anything hasn't driven Kingston Pike between eleven hundred and fourteen hundred hours." The next comments, comment is a group comment from a number of residents. I'll read their names first and then the comment. The first individual is DT Dice at 11527 Shire Cliff Lane, second Dan Hill, 533 Rayburn Lane, third Jameson Betty Breeding, 11606 Sheffield Drive, fourth Kathy Pierce, 607 Witherspoon Lane, fifth Narcea and Radha Karn, 11910 Lakehurst Lane, Gregory Connor, 11974 Lakehurst Lane, Christie and Mike Rucci, 11511 Shire Cliff Lane, Cunlawn Hong, 12170 Ingalls Crest Lane, Jen Zhang, 727 Witherspoon Lane, Wendy Wisty, 11652 Shire Cliff Lane, Narcea and Radha Karn, 11910 Lakehurst Lane, Todd and Terry Williams, 11962 Lakehurst Lane, Song Ning Zhang, Ming Xiao Tao, 11834 Lakehurst Lane, Jing Shang Gu, and Hong Bo Lu, 732 Witherspoon Lane, Anthony Crabtree, 11, or 12156 Ingalls Crest Lane, Jessica Winter, 11963 Lakehurst Lane, Alan and Lindsay Willis, 1, or excuse me, 12191 Ingalls Crest Lane, Adri Bligno, 11535 Shire Cliff Lane, Mike Roberts, and Judy Tobias, 1152628, excuse me, Shire Cliff Lane, Chris Taylor, 720 Witherspoon Lane, Gary Hirsch, 11842 Lakehurst Lane, Josh Hall, 11613 Jasper Lane, Melanie Hall, 11613 Jasper Lane, Susan Hirsch, 11842 Lakehurst Lane, Jeremiah and Bailey Steele, 11933 Lakehurst Lane. And this is a comment from those individuals. "I live in Sheffield subdivision and I object to both of these proposals, that is agenda items eight and nine, the change zoning in order to allow high density housing. In both cases, existing neighborhoods are not sufficiently protected with buffers and the proposed zoning is inconsistent with both the land use plan and the land use adjacent to the proposed development. We have a good land use plan. I'll stick to it instead of just throwing out more apartments where they don't belong. Farragut has plenty of apartments already. Adding more is going to further deterioration of an already bad traffic situation. It really has no good solution, especially in Griggsby Chapel-Smith Road corridor. Traffic on Kingston Pike through Farragut is way too heavy already." Next comment is from Bill and Diane Hall, 668 Rochard Boulevard. "We live in the Fox Run subdivision and object to both of these proposals, that is agenda items eight and nine, the change zoning in order to allow high density housing. In both cases, existing neighborhoods are not sufficiently protected with buffers and the proposed zoning is inconsistent with the current land use and land use adjacent proposed development." This sounds like the same, basically, it's the same comment that I just stated with the previous person. I'm not going to read that again. Talking about the land use plan. And the next comment is from a group of individuals. I'll read their names. Mr. and Mrs. Gary Schneider, 243 Fordham Way, Mr. and Ms. Yoshi Mr. and Ms. Yoshi Sasaki, 240 Fordham Way. Ms. Jane Ventima, 235 Fordham Way. Carolyn Mills, excuse me, 239 Fordham Way. Richard Stone, 242 Fordham Way. Betsy Hill, 213 Fordham Way. And Elizabeth Hobson, 11905 Appleton Way. And their comment is, we wish to voice our concern regarding items eight and nine on the agenda for Thursday's upcoming meeting. These items address the rezoning of two large parcels of land very near to our homes, which would allow the construction of large high-density apartment complexes essentially in our backyards. We understand the need for Farragut to continue to develop, but are not happy with these two proposals. We would much prefer to have development proceed toward upscale condominiums, town homes, and single-family homes, which would grow our town, but not with such dense concentrations or congestion. Although I have lived in Farragut only three years, my neighbors listed above have resided here for many years, some more than 20. All of us value the peacefulness and small community that we currently enjoy. I cannot speak for everyone regarding their original decisions to live here. However, I can unequivocally state that I chose to purchase my home because it was in Farragut more upscale, in this quiet community on the street with little traffic. The addition of hundreds of apartments clustered closely together would undoubtedly diminish the small-town feel of Farragut and relegate us to being just like any other city. There was discussion of building upscale condominiums above boutique businesses, and we thought that was part of the development plan. That is the sort of growth which would enhance our town. The homes in Waverly Court have traditionally been in high demand and have historically not been on the market more than a few weeks whenever one comes up for sale. Property values have remained high due to many factors, not the least of which includes the fact that we are in the town of Farragut. The likelihood of had our property values will slide as high if we become just another city with overcrowded roads and intersections and schools. Setting aside the financial impact on Farragut homeowners, please consider impact on the quality of life in Farragut on a daily basis. Right now, today, there is significant traffic congestion at the intersection of Grigsby Chapel Campbell Station Roads, especially during AM and PM rush hours. When additional traffic is added via Boring Road from the apartments proposed there, it cannot help but add to the tired frustration of Farragut residents trying to get where they need to go. Similarly, sitting at traffic lights has never been a big issue here. But what will happen with apartments dumping more and more cars on the Kingston Pike from the proposed Ford property apartment complex? Please consider the importance of the small-town flavor of our community, as it is what makes it a pleasure to live here and to feel proud of our town. Next comment is from Becky Mayberry, 402 Royal Burt Dell Road. Please keep the heart of Farragut a nice residential neighborhood, community. There are lots of apartments in town. Please don't be swayed into changing the zoning for the Biddle, Ford, Boring Road properties. These are all in the heart of our town. Next comment is from Randall Roberts, 11905 Butter Nutt Lane to the Farragut Planning Commission. I would like to voice my family's opposition concerning rezoning proposals before the Farragut Planning Commission, which would permit high-density housing units to be constructed within town limits. We lack the necessary infrastructure to support such developments at this time, or any time in the immediate future, i.e. years, especially during concerning, especially concerning issues related to traffic congestion and the already overcrowded condition of our three Farragut schools. In many ways, this is again putting the cart before the horse, which seems to be the norm regarding these matters as of late. I'm sure that the planning commission members have been following or are aware of the significant increasing opposition to these rezonings, per comments posted on the Nextdoor website and/or through other sources available to them. COVID restrictions have created many concerns as to the manner in which these projects are being addressed and being pushed through by the town of Farragut. We request that this and any other rezoning requests be placed on hold until such time as residents may provide input and participate in discussions of such in a more normal and acceptable manner, that is, in-person and verbal discussions before town meetings. Next comment is from Masai Kapusta, 21 Hidden Grove Road. To the Farragut Planning Commission, I would like to voice my family's opposition concerning rezoning proposals before the Farragut Planning Commission, which would permit high-density housing units to be constructed within the town limits. There is lack of the necessary infrastructure to support such developments at this time or any time in the immediate future, especially concerning issues related to traffic congestion and already overcrowded condition of our three schools. And the last comment on this item is from Tara Wood at 11841 Lakehurst. I would like to start by saying I appreciate you all for serving our community. It cannot be easy to make decisions on behalf of 23,000 people, because I know it is not always easy to anticipate public opinion for all of those people. I would like to give my input on items eight and nine on the Farragut Municipal Planning Commission's agenda. I object to both proposals. The main reason is because rezoning of these areas is not in compliance with the 2012 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. That plan has not been changed since 2012, and it would take significant public outreach to modify that plan. There is an example of what significant public outreach looks like in the addendum to the C O U P. Plan has not been changed, and the tone of the public tells me that changes allowing additional apartments in our community will not be well-received. Another concern I have is traffic. I've lived in Knox County my entire life and moved to Farragut in 2017. I lived in Lake Ridge subdivision from 2005 to 2017. You may know that Lake Ridge is located approximately one mile west of the North Shore Town Center. When the concept of North Shore Town Center was introduced, I was thrilled. I thought it would be a great concept for the community. However, it did not consider that we already had that concept 20 minutes away in downtown Knoxville. Unfortunately, people were not interested, and the project stalled. If the people in town of Farragut wanted that type of community, why do they, why did they not move there when it was available? The finished product is much different than what was started, and the completed project is a disaster for the community. Despite additional traffic measures put in place, traffic is at a standstill on a regular basis. Morning and afternoon school traffic is impossible to deal with. I live one mile from the elementary school, and it took at least 45 minutes to take my son to school. I heard the comments from a meeting regarding requesting Knox County Schools to stagger school start times. That question was also posed to KCS when North Shore Town Center was built. They declined to do so. I'm not sure why anyone would think they would not do that now, especially considering the middle and high school students are bused together. I've not heard of an actual discussion occurring with KCS on this issue. Based on KCS's past decisions, this will not happen. We will be stuck with the additional traffic, and this will likely result in Farragut students being rezoned to other schools. Based on these issues, my husband and I chose to move to Farragut instead of purchasing in the North Shore area. Who knows how many others have done the same? How many people will purchase homes outside of Farragut once the town center is built? I am particularly concerned about crime. Adding another 1,200 homes would be bad, but adding 1,200 apartments would be devastating. Police response in Farragut is virtually non-existent on nights and weekends. I suspect the precinct in Turkey Creek helps with daytime response. I understand the limitations of the Sheriff's Department regarding response. Theft, vandalism, trespassing will never outweigh robberies, rapes, and murders. Facts are that the Sheriff's Department has to make violent crimes a priority. That will never change. It's also a fact that law enforcement spends more time at apartments than single-family homes. That is not going to change either. I believe at least one of the proposed apartment complex has studio and one-bedroom apartment for possible business travelers. Has anyone considered business travelers being, bringing prostitution and human traffic and crime to communities? Has anyone discussed this with the Sheriff's Department? Town of Farragut was incorporated because the residents were tired of the recklessness of Knox County regarding new builds. However, I'm very concerned we are headed down the same path. And that concludes the comments that I had under Agenda Item Eight and/or grouped as Agenda Item Eight and Nine together. Chairman?
It's Mark.
It's applicant, if they have any, I'm sure they will have some comments to make.
Hey, Mark, good evening. This is Michael Patterson with Horn Properties, 412 North Cedar Bluff Road, Suite 205, 37923. I just wanted to expand a little bit. You gave a very detailed and good summary of our development. I just kind of wanted to go into a little greater detail so the commission understands kind of what we are proposing here. This development is unique in itself because it is, it's designed for seniors. It's a senior living development. It's somewhat harmonious with its surrounding developments in that we already have an assisted living to the west of us, and we know that we are soon to receive a memory care to the west of us that Gary Keckley is going to be developing. So it's harmonious in that nature. And then to the north, we're proposing a R1 zoning to kind of give a transitional zoning buffer that the steering committee has suggested. That would be to the north of this development, but within the senior, within the senior living community, it's unique in that only people 50 and older can rent here. So a lot of the concerns that we just heard through the various emails with regards to, you know, crime and speeding, trash, even trafficking, I, you know, this alleviates 98% of that, I would, I would imagine. Again, this is something that Doug Horn, the owner of this property, would deed restrict, deed restrict. So if you do rezone this piece, Doug is willing to deed restrict the property so that it is designated for a 50 and older senior living development. I would also like to mention that within this development, we have, because we, you know, Doug and I, we've, we've developed in 25 different states, primarily the southeast. And when we travel into these different markets, these senior community developments are popping up all over in the southeast. They're extremely popular right now. The demand is through the roof. And when we visited several of these communities, within these communities, you'll see dog parks. A lot of the senior living people that rent there have pets. So this particular development will have a large pet village area and then walking trails that have connectivity all throughout, and also designated community areas. These are kind of outdoor living spaces where the residents can sit down, read a book, have social gatherings, and various other social events. So that, that's unique in itself. Just to address some of the concerns that were brought up, I, clearly I won't go over every one of them, but I'll try to touch on maybe three or four of the topics that, that seem to be mentioned the most. One was, I guess this was brought up quite a bit, that residents are concerned that the values of the surrounding homes next to multifamily developments, that the concern is that they will decrease. I, I can't think of one, one home in Farragut. Now, of course, Doug developed Lanesboro. If anybody on the, on the commission can show me one home value that has decreased because of that development, I would be shocked. The same goes for Derby Run. You just can't, if, if it's there, prove it, but you won't find it. The second thing is, is the school crowding and the overcrowding of our schools due to these. Well, again, this is 50 and older, so I'm not sure that, that really touches the school issue, but the vice mayor had mentioned about, I guess, the last hearing or two hearings ago, that there's data that suggests that multifamily doesn't increase or isn't a burden on the school systems. And then lastly, the traffic. We ima, we imagine that probably 85 to 90% of the people that will be living in this development will access off Kingston Pike through Village Commons Boulevard. Again, this is a, a road that Doug Horn shared in half the cost of with Gary Keckley. So, and it's signalized currently at Kingston Pike. So traffic's kind of a moot point as well. Just through some preliminary analysis, we think that that signal will still service at a, a level of service B or greater. So traffic isn't a concern. The property to the south of us is a, basically a vacant Ingalls Shopping Center. And then again, to the north of us, we're proposing a R1 zoning for a transition there in between our new development and Baldwin Park. What, you know, one other thing too that was brought up, I guess, if, if, if you took this plan and went with the original 2012 land comp plan, there would be no issues. And this very table that Doug and I are sitting at, back in 2011, various members of the town, some of which are no longer with the town, sat down at this table with Doug and I and discussed the land comp plan. And they had proposed the current zoning that we're asking for on this track, and Doug and myself agreed to it. But they came down, sat at this table, and went over all the different properties that Doug owned throughout Farragut. So fast forward eight years, well, actually six years later, 2018, when these steering committees were formed, well, it sounds like the steering committees went to the residents and not the property owners. Not once did we hear from the steering committee about Doug's property behind Ingalls. No one asked us. But before, when the land comp plan was being put together, they wanted our input. Now, I, I get it, there was public notices, but as landowners, you're not looking at the paper on a weekly basis or monthly basis, looking at the public notices to see, oh, well, how does this affect my property? So, you know, I, I get this, the steering committee and its purpose, but it also would have been nice for the steering committee to talk to the landowners, not just the residents within the community. Doug's lived there 40 years. I went to Farragut High School, K through 12, lived in Farragut for 12 years, and then just recently moved just north of Farragut on Shoto, but I shopped. just recently moved just north of Farragut on Shoto, but I shop there, I eat there, my kids go to school there, so I can, I consider myself a Farragut resident as well. But it just would have been nice for the steering committee to talk to the property owners as well and get that input. Because again, when you guys sat down with us at this very table back in 2011, this plan that we're presenting and that was in the 2012 land comp plan, this would work perfectly. That's really all I have to say. If you all have any questions, Doug and I are here to answer anything and go over this in greater detail if needed. So I'll turn it back over to you guys. Thank you.
Mark, we'll start out, does anybody have any questions or comments from the planning commission?
This is Commissioner Myers. I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Noah.
I have long been an advocate of diversified housing choices in this town, and I was part of that committee back in 2010 and 2011. And I think this is a great use of the property. I think it also, the applicant has also offered feathering, getting back to boring road, feathering density, that is, as well as tying it with an age restriction. And I'm not sure how we can do that with zoning, but I mean, the project that we just approved down on, down on McPhee and Boyd Station, we have some caveats tied to that as far as how many attached units could go to it. So I, surely we have some way to attach an age to this, but there is absolutely a demand for this product, and it's right behind a shopping center and has feathering density behind it. I think this keys right into what we talked about 10 years ago with, when we had a ton of public outreach and the citizens of this town of Farragut asked us for more housing choices, and this delivers.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Now, tonight, we're for discussion purposes only, so we will not vote on anything tonight, but if anybody has any questions or comments, now's a good time to go ahead.
Mayor Williams. What I'm pulling up is a sheet of paper that has my messages from listening to our citizens tonight, and of course, also, the only comment we have from the planning commission would be, Noah, so, May tonight is a listening time to hear what the people have to say, like I've done in the past. And so, most of the time, my comment will be formed after listening to everyone and then thinking about it. At this point, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Ed. I kind of look at it the way Noah was looking at it because of, we've always talked about the idea of the transition and the fact that there is, you know, a piece of property that we are one, that would give quite a bit of insulation. I've gone out and looked at the property a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. And of course, the piece of property we're looking at right now is kind of heavily wooded, about probably 60% of it, it looked like to me, just a guest. And it does form a transition, and if there's a restriction to, like, we can do the over 50 and above, I think that that certainly is an aspect that, with a adjoining property with the, it's already been developed by Mr. Horn and company for the assisted living and what have you. I think it's kind of a compatible, compatible use that gives that diversity of housing that we're looking for, you know, in a, in a measured way, not just, just R6 is R6 and that's it.
Anybody else?
I mean, we, the town couldn't place an age restriction, obviously, on anything, so we can't do that.
We couldn't place it on that, but if we can get some kind of commitment, I think it would be helpful.
With age restrictions, this is question that, how does that work as far as visitors go?
Well, yes, ma'am. You know, assuming that you're 50 and older, you can rent here. But if you've got a grandchild or a daughter or son or somebody that wants to come visit you, there's no restriction on visitors visiting the residence, so to speak.
How about length of time that they stay?
Eddie, this is Doug Horn. You know, every, every senior facility in the country, you can mention Hilton Head or go down to Florida, places that have the senior facility, a lot of the communities are 55 and over, and they have it in the bylaws, they have, I don't know if it's deed restricted, but we would deed restrict it so actually, people that live there could sue us if we violated the 50 and older. And the homeowners association that would live there, the senior facility, they, I'm sure, would adopt the 50 and older restriction too. But anybody that lives there could sue us if it's deed restricted. There's land up and down Kingston Pike that's been deed restricted to residential. Matter of fact, Admiral Drive off Kingston Pike was deed restricted to residential, but then the people that just built the dental facility there got over 50% of the landowners to sign a waiver of the deed restriction to residential at the corner of Admiral Drive and Kingston Pike. Now, so if it's deed restricted, you cannot change that unless everybody agrees that lives there. This project, like Michael said, would be a entry level into the senior facility there. Once you go to the senior living, multifamily units, if you got sick or then you go to assisted living, then you got really bad shape, Parkinson or Alzheimer, you'd go into the memory care. So it's, you know, I remember when we did Waverly Court over there on Smith Road and Boring Road, Smith Road and Boring Road, those people objected to that. There were people complained about that, the kind of meetings we'd held there. I'm sure Baldwin Park, people objected to Baldwin Park, and Bot Money did Baldwin Park. And I, and I, and I want to say, you know, we'll say this on item number nine too, that, you know, I remember, as you do, Eddie, well, some of us were here 40 years ago when the town formed, and we had 6,000 people in the town. Well, if we'd listened to the objections of 6,000, 6,000, the people that live in Farragut, we would never have had 22,000 people. Now we've got 22,000 people. Growth is change, change, you know, some people don't really like change, a lot of people don't like change. If you polled those 6,000 people in 1980, when you and Mary Ann, Ralph McGill, and Ron Sondland, and all the leaders at that time, which y'all did a great job, if you polled 6,000 people, I'm sure they would say, we don't want 22,000 people ever to live in this town. So, you know, there are a lot of people that, that are not registering their approval for this tonight, but I guarantee you, if we went out and polled a bunch of people and talked to a bunch of people, do you want senior living units here, I'd say we could get a lot of people to say they would. And we could do that if we had to, but I'd hate to go to all that trouble. But once you deed restrict, anybody that lives there could sue you if you violate the deed restriction, and the homeowners would pick up the deed restriction. The town, Mark's right, the town couldn't do that, but we, the private landowners, private property landowners, can do that, and we will do that. We'll put it right, and we will deed restrict it.
Okay, thank you. I'm a little bit different in that I don't want to live in a neighborhood that's my age.
Well, I don't.
I want a lot of younger people around.
I don't, I'm with you, I don't either. I want, I don't want to until I, my health requires me to move to someplace to start into the senior facility. I agree with you, I want to live with young people.
My question, Ed, how do we, we can't impose that restriction, that age restriction, but if we go to this rezoning, certainly we don't have any reason not to trust you, but at the same time, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned. How can we, what can we do to kind of win, win here relative to the assurance that it would be deed restricted?
Well, what you do, Ed, is you, you, you go first, let's see, how many readings is the zoning, two readings? Normally, you sell properties, two readings.
With the mayor, more than a mayor and all of them.
Yeah, that's what I mean. The mayor, BOMA has to zone in two readings. What you do, we've done this in other cities, other places, is you, you zone it, and then that you get the landowner, like we're promising to deed restrict it. We would deed restrict it, put a deed restriction of record at the courthouse in Knox County, and before you did the second reading, then you'd know it was deed restricted. That's the way you do it. We've done that at other places, where we've had to do something between the first and second reading, that's the way you do it. But we'd, you have Tom Hale, or David or Mark, documented the courthouse where we deed restricted 50 and older. Then at the second reading, you can approve the zone. That's what, that's what you should do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is Rita Holliday, and I have a couple of questions about the roads in and out. You intend to have a exit onto Boring Road, is that correct?
Well, this current plan shows a road that would travel north into our R1, and eventually that road would go and exit onto Boring Road. That is correct.
Okay, but as far as down closer to the shopping center development, you don't intend to have an exit down in that area?
No, ma'am.
Close, okay. And then you also intend to have an exit that comes out in front of the assisted living facility and comes out at the down traffic light?
That is correct, off of Village Commons Boulevard. That is correct.
And those are your only two exits you're planning on?
Yes, ma'am.
You're not planning on anything going across the assisted living onto Smith Road?
No, we don't, we do not plan on constructing anything that will go to Smith Road.
Okay.
We don't, we don't own that property, Rita. We sold that to the senior company.
Okay, okay.
We don't have access to Smith Road.
Traffic through there has increased greatly for a lot of reasons, but the school at the Baptist Church creates a lot of traffic in the mornings, like the other schools in Knox and Farragut do, but that, that has made a difference in the morning and, and by using the Boring Road exit onto Kingston Pike would be a help with that, I think, that time of day and in the afternoons too.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, I think that's my.
The fourth thing that we're working with as developers is when we view, you know, and because Doug has additional acreage here that, that eventually will one day be developed as well, but the good thing is, is we've got that brand-new traffic signal there, or Village Commons Boulevard, the brand-new Boulevard connecting to that existing center, and right now it's operating at a level of service of A because, quite frankly, there's just not enough traffic north of Kingston Pike on Village Commons Boulevard.
Right.
I mean, right.
And, and you're anticipating, do this again, you're anticipating a total of how many homes?
Two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty units. So it's 20 acres, and we're proposing 12 units per acre. And then on the northern section, the, the transition buffer, I guess, of the R1 zoning, we're looking at 12 lots roughly there.
So a total of 200 and something buildings?
Yeah, I mean, I guess you could say 252 technically.
Okay.
Well, they wouldn't be buildings, so it wouldn't be that many buildings, but do you have, I mean, you could have that many families, Rita?
Yeah, families, that's, that's accurate.
This is Commissioner Green, and I have a couple of comments and observations. As we review different proposals of developments in this commission, we all, as you've noticed tonight, we have a lot of comments, and most of those comments are negative. And a lot of times, the negative comments, we listen to them, but a lot of times, the negative comments are not consistent with the future land use plan. In this case, a lot of the comments were exactly consistent with the future land use plan. Right now, the future land use plan says we cannot do that, what we, we can't zone at R6, which is what the comments the staff made. I am most heavily influenced by the future land use plan. And because of that, because of the land use plan, and because of the restriction for the density, I would not be in favor of it unless we went back and changed the land use plan. That's my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Green, would you, would you have been in favor of this plan in 2017? Just go back three years?
I don't know the answer to that question, but it isn't 2017, and it's 2021, and we have other apartments that are going up all over. So I'm becoming to appreciate that this piece of land is zoned as it is.
Well, Mr. Green, I think what Michael's implying is that we always planned for this property based on the 2012 land use plan that was medium density, six to 12 per acre. We believe that we should be able to have 12 per acre because it's senior restricted, it's senior, it's not a bunch of kids going to school, not a lot of traffic. So that's what we always relied on with 2012. We did, we did not, like Michael said, we were not consulted when some steering committee come up with an idea to change our land use on our property. Nobody ever sat at this table and said, hey, by the way, we're going to change your land use. If they had, we'd object violently to that because it affects our value of our property. Every, every other community that we work in, a lot of, we get letters from Indiana, Ohio, Florida, and when people are rezoning or changing land use on land within a certain number of feet of your property, certainly your property, then we get a letter from the community saying, we're going to change land use or we're going to change the zoning. We got nothing like that from Farragut. Same thing's going to apply to number nine of Eddie Ford's property, we talked about Eddie Ford's property, same principle applies. We did not get notice that there was going to be a tax amendment change that killed Eddie Ford's use if you go with the new tax change. We think that's illegal, or I don't know if that's illegal or not, our county thinks it's illegal, but I think it's not good business when you change the land use of a person's property that they paid for with hard earned money they've owned for years, years without consulting. Like, Eddie Ford, we're going to talk about that next. In 1912, Grandfather Bevins bought that property, and that property's all been developed in pieces, the kids have inherited it. And then all of a sudden, there was a tax change, the land use plan, it killed Eddie Ford's prospect if you adhere to that tax change. Now, the other thing about land use plan is that it's only a guide, a guide. We, I don't know about Farragut could do this too, because a lot of communities we developed in, they would change the zoning even if the land use plan doesn't call for it. Land use plan's only a guide, it's not the law. Zoning is the law. We've done a lot of development where, I remember, I think I mentioned that in the staff developer meeting, I'll never forget, Plasky, Virginia, and Jasper, Indiana, we were proposing a good shopping center with retail sales, jobs, tax base, property tax, we're trying to go, we don't have the property tax in Farragut. Those communities had property tax, sales tax, and jobs, and they turned us down because of the land use plan. When we left town, they called us back, both of those specific communities, we've done about 140 shopping centers here. They called us back and said, come back, come back, we changed it back, we want this development, and we know it don't adhere to the land use plan, but we want it anyway. But we went back and they both. But we went back and they both were approved. That's, land use plan is just a guide, it's not the law of the land. Particularly when you change it, like was changed to this property going down to eight per acre, nobody, nobody had the, um, fairness to call us and say, do you have a comment about this? And Eddie Ford, same, same principle. I think that has to be factored in.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand that you've actually tried to do a really nice job of planning this piece of property. But I would like to repeat that the land use plan, I know it's a guide, I use that guide, some towns don't use it, and I think that's derelict. I use that guide. And if you think that it should be changed to a R6, then we should get the future land use plan changed. And my guess is that with the public sentiment in this town, you're probably not going to get that changed. Based on what I've heard for the middle property and what I'm hearing for the, the, this property here and for what I'm hearing for the Ford property. So I'm going to stick with my comment. Right now, even though you may have been mistreated, the way it is right now, the town went through the, the process as the process existed, and right now it is future land use plan such that this is not permitted, and I'm kind of sticking with that.
Okay, and we, and we told Mark Shipley, when Mark asked us to change the land use plan, we said, no, we don't want to ask for a land use plan change because we're relying on the 2012 land use plan, it's never coordinated with us. And we don't want to ask for a change in land use plan, Mr. Green, because they'll say, y'all will say no, then when we come in for zoning, you'll say no again. So we said, no, we're going to go for zoning only. We're not, we're not going to ask for land use plan change. And of course, you, you're a commissioner, we're a landowner, we have a lot of private property rights that's protected by the constitution. You are the voter of commission, you know, you, whatever you decided, it's your decision, and we, we respect that. But we may not agree with the overall commission decision. So you vote however you want to vote, of course, we'll take whatever action, we have to take the private property on. The town of Farragut, though, in my opinion, you need to be more cognizant and more respectful of the private landowner that has bought property and owned it for years and years and years. I don't think the town of Farragut's that respectful of that. That's my, and that's my opinion. I got as much right as a private citizen as, as anybody. So, but you vote however you want to, of course, it's your decision.
Uh, Rita, I've got a question.
Go ahead, Noah.
I remember when we changed the land use plan a couple of years ago, and what I remember the objective of changing the land use plan was to make basically the areas identified in the land use plan and the density match our existing zoning. Thus, we had discrepancies between zoning that was available in our municipal code and I would call it zones that were available in the land use plan. And so I thought the whole purpose of changing, what I remember was we were trying to match the densities, because we had things that weren't, that we, we had identified that we didn't even have zones for. But Mark, what am I, Mark Shipley is who I've been kind of addressing this to, um, I, I said, I know the change that Mr. Horn's talking about, I remember it from a few years ago, but what am I missing with that? I, again, I thought the purpose was to match the densities in the municipal code with the existing zoning.
No, it wasn't. The problem was, and we all realized this as we worked with the plan and projects, is a density range of six to 12 is ridiculously wide. And so if you look at the other residential uses in, that are, residential densities in our land use plan, they're much more narrowly defined. And so all we were doing there was breaking that six to 12 range, which was way too large in the first place, into two different sections that didn't necessarily follow the zoning. It was basically just, um, breaking it up to match the other residential land uses in the plan. And if somebody wanted to do something at a higher density range, then that would be evaluated, you know, on the higher range of what was six to 12, let's say nine to 12, then that would be evaluated on its merits based on the surrounding plan of development context. So, um, those properties that were already developed under that density, like Lanesborough or what became the overlook, would be the high density residential. The other areas where, where they're shown as the six to eight medium density residential, if somebody wanted to do something higher, then that would be evaluated. And then the land use map, as John Green says, would have to be changed to high density residential land use, at least that's the staff's recommendation. Then your zoning request, if you're requesting R6, would be consistent with the future land use map. But no, we didn't change the future land use map for that reason that you're talking about. It was basically just because it was way too wide a range in the first place, and we were just breaking it up into, um, you know, more logical divisions, frankly.
Okay, then I've got kind of a follow-up question. If the R6 allows for up to 12 units an acre, and, and then why, why don't we have any areas identified on the land use plan that allows more than eight units an acre?
Well, we have some that are existing developments. Uh, the ones that, um, would be more than that would be evaluated on their merits, as I, as I indicated, and then the map would be amended accordingly if, if the community wanted to see that kind of density in that particular location. Yeah, so it's not saying you can't do it, it's just that.
Right.
Because that does involve more density and more impact to your infrastructure and your community, then that is why it needs a little more careful assessment. And then if the community feel, and the commission and board feel that that's an appropriate land use designation and corresponding zoning, then they can act accordingly in that manner.
Okay, it's been a while since we talked about it. It's been three years. I just couldn't remember the conversations.
And you have to remember, too, is what Mr. Horn's talking about, there was never, I mean, we, we advertise our, our processes to death. I mean, I don't know of a community that has more outreach to the public than we do. The, these medium density residential land uses are all over the town, and they don't follow property lines. They're not intended to follow property lines. Zoning lines follow property lines. Future land use map lines are basically a representation of a vision at some future date for a part of your community. They don't follow property lines, so you can't necessarily even identify who the property owner is. And plus, there's hundreds of properties that would fall under the medium density resid, or part of their property would be in the medium density residential land use. I mean, there's no community that would notify everybody of such a modification, but we certainly had plenty of public meetings and discussions about what was going on. There was, it was never, shouldn't have been a surprise to anybody.
We also had a big turnout to that.
We had a lot of turnout.
Had very good turnout to that.
Yes, absolutely.
And Mark, there was discussion at the time of the planning commission accepting the, uh, land use plan, that we also ran it through the board of mayor, board of mayor and alderman. And what was the process there? Do you remember that?
Well, the mixed use town center part of the plan has to go through the board, the mayor and alderman, because that's the part that they adopted, the text and the map related to that, which would relate to the next agenda item, but it, it wouldn't necessarily relate to this particular item. That was just a purely planning commission matter.
Okay. But so the board of mayor and alderman did adopt that?
They adopted the mixed use town center part of the plan, text and map. So anything you modify in relation to the text or map for that land use designation has to go through both the planning commission and the board.
Okay.
Mark, Mayor Williams, uh, medium density on 20 acres would be what, 160, uh, units? Is that correct?
Yeah, whatever, 12, I'm not, 12 times 20. If you, oh, you're talking about the, the high limit of eight medium density residential?
Uh, yeah.
Like if you were to go? Yeah, let's see, that would be, right, yep, 160.
And the high for, uh, R6 would be, which is, uh, high density, it'd be, uh, 12 units, so that'd be 240, is that, is this the differential we're talking about?
At the high end of both, it would be a differential of 80 units at the high end of both of those land uses, yes.
That's, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yep.
I'll, I kind of have an observation based upon what the mayor just said. If, if Mr. Horn is willing to lower the density on the areas in the back, i.e. to the R1 and R2, of which according to the land use plan, he's eligible for up to six to eight units an acre, it might be an interesting calculation to say, well, if he took all the property, this is kind of like what we do on R1 OSR, when we take all the property and say, okay, let's base it upon what your total density is. The reality is, is that, that medium density of six to eight goes all the way back to the north side, to Boring Road, basically Ben Boring's old barn. It'd be kind of interesting to see what that calculation looks like, what he'd be eligible for under medium density.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. We, we could, uh, go for medium density on all the property all the way.
I think we've got quite a few people, Stunt got their, uh, mic muted, and it's, it's causing interruption for you, I believe.
Okay, can you hear us now?
I can.
I, I was saying that, uh, what Noah's suggesting, yeah, that would be fine with us to, to zone the property all the way to the, the north end as medium density. Let's say Baldwin Park, uh, they would, they would object to that. That Baldwin Park, which there are a lot of people, as I've said before, when the town was formed, they did more than 22,000 people there when they had 6,000 people. But if, if, if the board wanted to go medium density, uh, all the way to the north end of our property, Boring Road, and we have an entrance on Boring Road, and then help, you know, with the widening of Boring Road, we can talk about that, too. But right now, all we were asking for is just the 20 acres at the, at the land use plan for 12 per acre, with no entrance to Boring Road, but with a buffer north of the 20 acres. But we, we don't mind talking about, uh, medium density of all the property, that, that would be, that would be fine with us.
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to follow the land use plan by hard and fast rules, you would be eligible for medium density on all your remaining property.
That's exactly right. That's, that, that's exactly right, and that's the way it was been since 2012, and even with the change in 18 that we were not aware of, and I'll address that, too. That may have been discussed, but we work every day all over the place, and we were not aware that there was going to be a change in the 2012 plan. And when it changed, it changed, we couldn't unring the bell. Once we found out it had changed, we were shocked, but we did not know it was going to happen. But, but I, I like your idea. Apparently that's a good point. The whole property was medium density all the way to the north side of the property. We could go in for all that, then eight units per acre, um, that, that certainly would be sufficient if we had all the property zoned.
Well, y'all are confusing zoning and future land use, it's not the same thing. I mean, the property's mostly zoned rural residential right now, R1, which is a little over two units per acre. So, I mean, medium density residential is just a future land use designation. That doesn't have any, I mean, it's completely different from the zoning. You'd have to rezone the whole 41 acres, it sounds to me like what you're talking about. And, I mean, you're definitely going to have to amend your request with what you originally submitted if, if you want to entertain that kind of approach. And, you know, we'll just have to evaluate that based on its merits. I mean, I don't, but, but it's not the same, future land use is not zoning, I mean, doesn't...
Oh, I know that, we know that. We know that. Well, we, we, we can think about that, Mark.
Okay. I mean, you can request whatever you want, but you'd have to amend, you know, obviously what you originally submitted, and we'll, we'll present it back to the planning commission for another workshop discussion and see, see where it goes. But, I mean, you would have to amend it.
Yeah, yeah, we're sure.
We're, we're going down a rabbit hole here that I did not intend. What, what I was trying to do is look at the total density that, that Mr. Horn would be eligible for based upon the land use plan designation. And then, just like we did down on the, the Boyd Station property, look at different uses in different areas and still try to incorporate feathering in the zoning. And I think, again, I have not done the math, I don't know exactly what it is, but he might be very well eligible based upon the total density and the land use plan to be able to get the units per acre that he needs for the area that's up behind the Ingalls, and then feather the density all the way back so it, it's consistent with the other zoning that is back there on Boring Road.
Yeah, that, that, that's what we did, Noah, on Greets the Chapel Road, when we did the 48 acre development that was the Campbell property. We built Lanesborough, Ramsgate, y'all talked about Ramsgate earlier, uh, to do that when I was the partner in Saddle Brook. We did Ramsgate, and then the single family subdivision. But we did a average zoning across the property, and we got almost 10 per acre for Lanesborough apartments. Like Michael said, too, I agree with Louise, I don't believe the apartments have really hurt, um, values really, because we've had no complaints of homeowners anywhere around Greets Chapel Road about Lanesborough. I've never heard anybody say it hurts their, their value. But you're right, that's where you have Ramsgate and single family development outside it, and then the multifamily Lanesborough in the back. So, yeah, we'll, let us think about it. It's getting kind of late, we got, y'all got two more agenda items and one bigger we need to, to wait in, but let us think about what, what Noah said, Mark, and we can.
Okay.
Evaluate this more later.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fine.
We appreciate the discussion, uh, about this. Thank you, thank you for your time, Noah.
Is anybody else in the planning commission having any questions or comments at this As we said, this is for discussion only tonight, we're not voting on anything here. In that case, are we ready to move on to item number 10? Item number nine. Item number nine is discussion on a zoning map amendment request, property referenced at 11500 Kingston Pike, west of Farragut Town Hall, parcel 148, tax map 142, 68.31 acres to rezone a portion of the current, portion of the area currently zoned O-1 office to C-1 general commercial to rezone a portion of the area currently zoned O-1, to B-1 buffer, and R-1 rural single family residential, and R-2 general single family residential to R-6 multifamily residential to rezone a portion of property currently zoned R-1, R-4 attached single family residential, One Properties Incorporated, advocate.
Well, that was a long introduction, that might be, well, um, obviously, this is a pretty complicated item, and it is just a workshop discussion, it's just talking about thoughts. I do have some citizen comments that I'd read after I go over kind of an introduction to this. Of course, this property is the property just to the west of the Farragut Town Hall, between Glen Abbey and Park Place. It's a rectangular shaped property, as you can see there, that's a section of the future land use map existing. It's, uh, it's about 760 feet on average, wide and a... It's uh, it's about seven hundred and sixty feet on average wide and a, over a little over thirty-eight hundred feet deep. Um, sixty-eight point three one acres. Um, current zoning on the property is kind of a mixture of a number of districts. The north end closer to Kingston Pike, uh, the pink area there is C one general commercial. Then to the south of that, you have Office O one. And that basically goes back to the back of the town's property, and there's a buffer zoning district. In between the office, in this light colored area here is uh, R one rural single family residential. Then the remainder of the property is R two general single family residential. The request for the rezoning, basically the, to extend the area that's currently zoned office, uh, really extend commercial back to include the area that's currently zoned office and the buffer, most of the buffer. And then the R one area and part of the R two requested to be rezoned to R six multi, multifamily residential, and then to the south of that, the R two area to be rezoned to R four attached single family, which is the same zoning as Park Place, uh, just behind the town hall. Um, this was reviewed at the staff developer meeting on January seventh. And uh, you know, as the staff has always notes, whenever we're reviewing rezoning requests, we look at the consistency with the plan and the text of the plan, the surrounding plan of development. If you look at the future land use map again, let me go back to that. A large part of the property, probably over two-thirds of it, has a future land use designation as a mixed use town center. And then, um, there's a medium density residential south of that, and then low density residential, uh, and open space south of that. Now, when the plan was updated in two thousand twelve, as I mentioned earlier, we mapped general future land uses uh, at that time. And um, because of this property's uh, being vacant and being in an area near what was identified as the kind of downtown part of Farragut, which is the intersection of Campbell Station Road and Kingston Pike. Um, that's how this property uh, received that, a lot of that mixed use town center designation. It was one of a number of candidates where a downtown style of development or look and feel of the downtown might be a good candidate. And it's not really just restricted to one location. It, it's just a general area, uh, the purple area in general. Uh, it could be candidates for a number of, you know, downtown uh, type developments. This property actually, part of it, um, pretty much back to the back of the town hall property. Back in two thousand seven, uh, there was a rezoning request that went all the way to the second reading at the Board of Mayor and Almen to rezone that part. And I'll kind of highlight where that was, basically. It went, it was basically uh, all this area here. There was a concept plan and a request to town center district for that. And they had a vertical mixed use town center development as part of that concept. The rest of it was not requested for rezoning at that time. So, one of the things that we pointed out at the staff developer meeting, since it appears that the applicant has an interest in building a vertical mixed use product in a large part of that area, is to revisit that concept plan, that idea uh, at that time, and maybe look at the town center district, which was created also in two thousand seven, kind of in conjunction with what happened with the rezoning of the, that property or the, the process of trying to rezone that property. Basically, the market, that was when the hous, the housing crisis hit roughly right at the same time this was going through second reading, and it never came to fruition. Uh, so, but there was a lot of good elements um, that could be looked at with that, with that plan. And maybe the town center district might be something to look at for part of this property. As I mentioned earlier, uh, the meet, the middle part of what they're requesting uh, is proposed to go to R six. And uh, you know, in looking at what zoning is appropriate uh, for different property, you look at the, the map, future land use, you look at the text of the plan. And the text in the plan is pretty clear. Um, back in the original plan in two thousand twelve, this is not talking about recent amendments, um, but in two thousand twelve, there was the concept provided uh, for transitions. And those would come into play where you've got a rezoning or a development that's proposed adjacent to existing residential communities. And there was a, a lot of mention in, in the original plan, which frankly, in the recent text amendments that we passed through the board, really just brought out those principles to a more specific degree. It, we didn't really reinvent anything. They were, they were in there from the start. Uh, they talk about protecting existing neighborhoods from incompatible development. And from a staff's perspective, requesting to rezone that area at R six would be counter to land use plan uh, pretty dramatically, uh, because it would be a very incompatible form of development and density in relation to what's around it and it's built already. I mean, you've got less than three units per acre uh, in um, Park Place. It's a pretty low density attached single family. And, you know, uh, around a little bit less dense than that, even in Glen Abbey uh, to the west of that. So, you know, R six just doesn't provide for the ability to transition, because when you rezone property to something, then someone, may not be Mr. Horn, maybe somebody else, can put a product there that could realize a density of twelve units per acre when what's around it is, you know, under four. Uh, so that, that's an issue, I think, with what they're presenting. And to some degree, it's also an issue with area to the south, because that's um, R four, you know, you've got very low density or undeveloped property that abuts much of that. So that would also have to be looked at. Um, so, you know, I think for those reasons, um, you know, and the clear inconsistency with the plan, as it was originally produced in two thousand twelve, uh, we couldn't support the rezoning that's been submitted at this time. I think they need to go back and, and look at, at the property. Can they address the transition concept? And how would they provide for, if it were developed, rezoned and developed, a um, product that would protect existing uh, communities from incompatible development consistent with the plan? So, that's kind of an overview of that. And uh, so, if, if it's okay with you all, I'll go ahead and read into the record citizen comments that were submitted specifically for this agenda item. Then the applicant can take over after that, and I can get a drink of water. And so, let's go through these. Not quite as many as the previous item, because as I mentioned, um, a lot of those overlapped with this one. So, the first comment uh, is a group response. Um, and I'll read the residents' names and addresses first, and then the comment. First is Roy A. Neely and Teresa W. Neely, three hundred Park Place Boulevard. Grant Luna, five thirty-five Colonial Ridge Lane. Christie Fondry, Fondren, five fifteen Colonial Ridge Lane. Thomas and Sandra Bickford, five forty-three Colonial Ridge Lane. Jay and Eon Lee, two thirty-two Ivy Gate Lane. John Jigga, five forty-seven Colonial Ridge Lane. Uh, Ravi Ganta, five oh seven Colonial Ridge Lane. Jamie Noling, five thirty-nine Colonial Ridge Lane. Elaine Slawski, five nineteen Colonial Ridge Lane. Mika Jacobs, five eleven Colonial Ridge Lane. Louis Slawski, five nineteen Colonial Ridge Lane. Hugh Daltry, five twenty-three Colonial Ridge Lane. Brad Benson, four ten Park Place Boulevard. Marcia Brinson, two eighteen Ivy Gate Lane. Rick and Leslie Sminner, five forty-four Colonial Ridge Lane. Jan Fia and Robert Starkey, three sixteen Park Place Boulevard. Dallas and Judy Reynolds, two nineteen Ivy Gate Lane. Daniel David Jacobs second, five eleven Colonial Ridge Lane. Richard and Pam Zachary, five forty-eight Colonial Ridge Lane. Dean and Melody Stallings, two fifty-two Ivy Gate. Sandra Warren, five thirty-one Colonial Ridge Lane. Deron and Sharon Little, two forty-eight Ivy Gate Lane. Alexandra and Whitney Scottalrude, two forty Ivy Gate Lane. And the comment is, I'm a resident of Park Place of Farragut and not in favor of slash opposed the rezoning proposal of Eddie Ford property submitted to the town of Farragut by Horn Properties, Inc. Is not being consistent or compatible with the adopted comprehensive land use plan. Farragut two thousand twenty-five, eight key strategies, page twelve, transitions, to protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible new development and to encourage gradual transitions even within a new development, such as between blocks with different densities. And the policy is densities of new development should be compatible with existing adjacent densities. Second comment uh, you know, from an individual, this case, Robert Crossley, five oh three Colonial Ridge Lane. The Farragut CLUP is a remarkable document about planning towards the future health and appearance of Farragut. Rezoning the property south of Park Place Boulevard from B one, R one and R two to R six multifamily residential district, that is high density, is an overreach and anything but about being compatible to the adjacent R three Glen Abbey and R four Park Place neighborhoods. It is my understanding that R six comes with no requirement other than a buffer strip. That is no transition requirement stipulated by Farragut CLUP, a document which both Mr. Ford, as a longtime resident, former mayor, Mr. Horn, as a longtime resident and developer must be aware of. Additionally, the proposal also includes extension of the current C one zoning area currently from Kingston Pike to Municipal Center Drive to Park Place Boulevard. Rezoning from O one, that further pushes the envelope of incompatibility as the current O one designation was highlighted in the CLUP as being about establishing a transition from commercial to residential. This is not an insignificant proposal of minimum impact or an effort to harmonize transition to or within surrounding neighborhoods. One would also have to suspect a traffic study will confirm that the density of this proposal will become a bottleneck, which just in the last few years has become painfully evident on Kingston Pike during peak hours. Hours which seems to be, seems to keep extending, and especially at its intersection with Campbell Station Road. Neither parties would likely ever want themselves living next to what has been proposed. My understanding is also that Mr., that the Horn Properties Inc. design rendering is only a proposal. That is by no means what actually may be constructed if the zoning change is granted. Like saying a blank check, this is the provincial square peg being pushed into a round hole. Just say no to this proposal. Town of Farragut, the development of this property is inevitable, just not this proposal for all the aforementioned reasons. Uh, the next comment is from a number of residents that have signed on to it, and I'll read their names first. Corey Chrysler, five eighteen Glen Abbey Boulevard. Ken and Jane Atkins, Glen Abbey Boulevard. Dennis Laneman, two oh four English Station Road. Robert and Deborah Shriver, three oh eight English Station Road. Barbara Layman, two oh four English Station Road. Patel Teet U, five fifty-five Galen Glen Abbey Boulevard. Richard Dickinson, four forty-four Glen Abbey Boulevard. Nicholas Panacor, four seventeen Port Charles Drive. Alexander and Sheila Zinski, two thirty-eight English Station Road. Tony Poole, five hundred Glen Abbey Boulevard. James Parks, five fifty-six Glen Abbey Boulevard. Jenny Craddock, two, or four twenty-four Port Charles Drive. Seong Hun Cho, five thirty Glen Abbey Boulevard. Audrey Baroclo, eleven six hundred San Martin Lane. Ann Walker, two, two oh eight English Station Road. Sarah Lee, five thirty Glen Abbey Boulevard. Liam Tran, two fifty-eight English Station Road. Carwing and Elizabeth Chan, four forty-seven Glen Abbey Boulevard. Jackie Bradley, Rip, Rippey, five forty-one Glen Abbey Boulevard. Don Mann, five eighteen MacArthur Lane. A.J. Ramirez Cuesta, five twenty-four MacArthur Lane. Harry and Marion, Harry and Marion Bro, one one five two nine Finn Castle Lane. Annette Hall, three hundred Port Charles Drive. William and Rheta Morgan, eleven five oh eight San Martin Lane. Larry and Pam Myers, four sixteen Port Charles Drive. Julia Moni, three nineteen English Station Road. Janice Ishi, five oh six MacArthur Lane. Uh, Marilyn, or Mary Ann Magra, eleven six oh nine San Martin Lane. Sam and Linda Taylor, eleven six oh four San Martin Lane. Linda DeLong, four twenty-five Port Charles Drive. Suzanne Hall, three oh one Port Charles Drive. David Ishi, five oh six MacArthur Lane. Richard and Carol Brown, four ten Port Charles Drive. Josh Hughes, five oh seven Glen Abbey Boulevard. Beverly Blessinger, eleven five oh one Finn Castle Lane. Brett Thomas, eleven five oh one Kimball Lane. Erin and Patricia Lewis, Erwin and Patricia Lewis, sorry, two oh, uh, two fifty English Station Way. James Burrell, four oh five Port Charles Drive. Carolyn Jones, two thirty English Station Road. Jean and Kay Gabey, five nineteen Glen Abbey Boulevard. Robert E. and Janet H. Upchurch, eleven five one two Finn Castle Lane. Kathleen Mahoney Norris, two hundred English Station Road. Michelle Newstead, five fifty-nine Glen Abbey Boulevard. Lori Stewart, four twenty Port Charles Drive. Lily and Perkins, three oh four English Station Road. Richard and Joe Ellen Firestone, three twenty English Station Road. Gail Wright, two thirteen English Station Road. Stephen Richardson, two oh one English Station Road. Janet and Harry Glaze, five Janet and Harry Glaze, five twenty-five MacArthur Lane. Philip and Margaret Dickey, five oh one MacArthur Lane. Lori Hunick, eleven six oh one San Martin Lane. And the comment from all those. Is the following, I'm writing this letter concerning future zoning decisions which will affect our Farragut community. Reading the comprehensive plans that the town of Farragut leaders have developed. I am encouraged by the extensive thought put into the comprehensive land use plan and zoning maps. These well-developed visionary plans will help steer the town into the future and provide. A community in which we all will be proud to live in. As a resident of the Glen Abbey subdivision, I am concerned about the January twenty-first FMPC agenda item number nine. For the rezoning of the Ford property. The request to rezone. Existing designated zones O one, B one, R one and R two. To zone R six multifamily residential apartments is, in my opinion, incompatible with the C L U P. C L U P is the town's guiding principle and should not be easily deviated from. On page twelve of the C L U P, the process for protecting existing neighborhoods. While allowing greater housing choices is outlined under the heading Transitions. And is quoted as follows. To protect existing neighborhoods from incompatible new development. And to encourage gradual transitions even within a new development. Following guidelines should be applied. If a density different from adjacent property is proposed, transition should occur within the proposed development. Gradually increase or decrease away from the common boundary. Zone R six has no language within it to address transition from existing neighborhoods. In addition, R six has much higher density than the existing adjoining neighborhoods. Ford property is long north to south, but very narrow east to west, which makes the gradual housing transition to Glen Abbey, R three and Park Place. R four incompatible if rezoned to R six. Specifically, R three is designated small lot, single family residential with low density residential. At a very minimum, at the very minimum, if the request to rezone to R six is considered, there needs to include. Density transition requirements to protect existing neighborhoods that it abuts. Additionally, in my opinion, town of Farragut has ample apartments within its borders, either existing or proposed. I believe that apartments have a detrimental effect on a community if locations are not wisely considered. Results can be reduction of property values and quality of life for existing adjoining neighborhoods and also increased traffic. These points should be considered. Proper zoning of the Ford property will enhance our town as a desirable community to live and work. Uh, R six zoning resulting in apartments are not the proper housing choice for this location. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to making Farragut a proud community to live in. Next comment is from Lola and James Kirkpatrick at four sixty Glen Abbey Boulevard. As a resident of the Glen Abbey subdivision, I'm concerned about the January. Twenty-first FMPC agenda item number nine. For the rezoning of the Ford property. Request to rezone existing, now this is all, this has kind of the same comments actually is. It's the same comment as what I just read. Next comment is from William Craddock, four twenty-four Port Charles Drive. I'm a resident of the Glen Abbey subdivision and I'm dismayed by the request to rezone Ford property to R six. Regardless of the claims and plans of the developer requesting this change. Uh, it would be irresponsible for those evaluating this request to assume anything other than. That ultimately the property will be developed to the fullest extent allowed by the applicable zone restrictions. Having R six density development immediately adjacent to an existing R three development Glen Abbey. Would degrade the value of Glen Abbey properties and would be inconsistent with the logical prudent requirement for transit. Transition in such cases called for in the town's comprehensive land use plan. Because Ford property is not very wide east to west, accomplishing an appropriate transition to R six seems difficult. If not possible. At least for the portions of the property adjacent to Glen Abbey on the west and Park Place on the east. Diagram I have seen of the proposed development on Ford property clearly does not provide any such transition. There are multiple locations either being developed or proposed for development within Farragut that are better suited for high density multifamily development. Development of the Ford property should be restricted to only that which is compatible with the exist, adjacent neighborhoods. The next comment is from Elaine Slawski, five one nine Colonial Ridge Lane. I sent my comments yesterday about the use for the Eddie Ford property. Looking at the plans that were introduced in twenty fifteen, I feel. The board needs to reevaluate the C L U P. With the current changes in our world as a result of the COVID pandemic, the identified uses for this land might have changed. First of all, what really is the need for more office slash medical space? As one drives down Kingston Pike, all you see is empty office space. As a result of the pandemic, most work is being carried out at homes and not in office space. When the pandemic is over, the need for outside office space will ever go. Will ever go back to pre-COVID levels. As a resident of Farragut, I would like to see the board try to think outside the box for the use of this land. We really need more shopping options. Turkey Creek shops are all under attack from online purchasing. Again, their sales volumes will never return to pre-COVID numbers. I'm not a land developer, but know what I see. The need for this type of development will not be there. Current ideas are outdated. Farragut needs to stand out and try something different in their land development. I don't know what that is, but I'm sure someone does. A suggestion would be something to increase the educational level. Physical health and community interaction of its residents. The next comment is from John Aiken. One two one four four Brookstone Drive. Does the town of Farragut need a second town center? I would much rather see the one development on the Ford property as was looked at before with vertical mixed use as discussed circa twenty twelve. The property is not directly across from the entrance of Farragut Middle and High School. I realize the traffic study is being done for Jamestown Road, but I do not see that entirely fixing the traffic issue. Additionally, R six residential will only add more traffic to the school zone, decreasing safety for students. Without making Kingston Pike six lanes, I believe we are going to. Gridlock the town by having two town centers within a half mile of each other. I'm also concerned that the changes to the C L U P in order to accommodate horizontal mixed use were not done properly. Significant public outreach was not sought. And the last comment on this item is from Mary Ann Aiken, five sixty-nine Wyndham Hill Road. I'm writing to urge you to postpone all changes to zoning until the people of Farragut can attend the meetings. Having two town centers located within a half mile of each other will increase traffic and decrease safety for students of Farragut intermediate middle and high schools. I would rather see the town center built on Ford property as discussed in twenty twelve and residents of the town gave their input for the project. Leadership has not sought public input for the town center on the Biddle property. Also, changes were made to allow horizontal mixed use without public input. Please do not let your legacy as town officials be. Major projects that were not approved by the majority of the people of Farragut. Let them have a chance to voice their opinions in person. And that concludes the citizen comments, agenda item number nine. Yeah, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate all of that. We'll start off with, again, this is for discussion tonight only and um. We'll start out by asking the applicants if they have any um comments.
Rita, uh, this is Michael Patterson again, Horn Properties, four one two North Cedar Bluff, Suite two oh five Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven nine two three. Commissioners, when we, Mark, when he initially started talking about this property, he had mentioned that the property is. Seven hundred and sixty feet wide and extremely deep. So this is a very challenging piece of property to develop as I know you all are aware. So when we looked at this property, we've, we've gone through literally almost ten different renditions of this site plan in order to. Really just make it work and flow and transition properly. Uh, but the main focus when we first got onto this, this site was really focus on the kind of town center, the downtown development area. That you see that fronts along Kingston Pike. We transitioned in from Municipal Center Drive next to the existing Farragut Town Hall. And the post office, and this is kind of again, the, the main focus where we said, okay, this is a. This is an area that we know Farragut would love to have some type of town center downtown concept. So the majority of these buildings on this plan are three stories. Uh, the first story can be office, it can be retail, it can be medical. Um, and then transitioning into uh either again, um, second floor, um, office, medical, third floor lofts, condos, that sort of thing. So there's a lot of flexibility within this plan. Um, and then of course, we took into consideration the land cop plan, we've got street parking. We've got the, um, again, the transition into Municipal Center Drive into behind the, um, existing coals that we did. Uh, back in, uh, I believe ninety-eight. Uh, but another thing here that we did is we, we realigned Jamestown Boulevard as Mark was mentioning. We see this intersection now as a signalized intersection and then bringing, basically, we would parallel, um, Jamestown Boulevard and extend it. Beside the existing Glen Abbey residential development, kind of using that as a buffer. Um, and then also adding a thirty-five foot or yeah, thirty-five foot buffer in between that road and Glen Abbey. So there is some transition there because again, this property is so deep, uh, it's almost like a bowling alley. I mean, if you, if you really want to look at it, it, again, the seven hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And so it, it's almost impossible to have these um. Transitional zonings that the steering committee put in place in eighteen because it is so deep and, and you've got the two existing residentials on either side of this, so. But we take in the, the town center and then we transition into again, a multifamily development. This is not similar to the one that we're proposing, um, behind the Ingles. The Ingles again is deep restricted to fifteen older. This is just your standard multifamily development and then um. To the south of that, we've, we've presented the um attached condos. And we're looking at basically three units per acre there. Also, if you look on the plan, you'll see that we've, we've shown an existing kind of, or not existing, but a future connection. For Jamestown Boulevard to extend to South Campbell Station. Got Campbell Station Road there. And again, that was in the land cop plan, so we incorporated that. And we think that with the new signal at Jamestown Boulevard and the realignment and then the signal there from Municipal Center Drive to Campbell Station Drive. And then the future, uh, Jamestown Boulevard extension, we can accommodate the traffic within this development. But again, we've got the thirty-five foot buffer that stretches the entire depth of this property. And then we've got another buffer on the other side there by Park Place, again, thirty-five feet there, along with some sporadic green spaces for additional buffering. We're, there's two out parcels that also kind of buffer the downtown development area from Kingston Pike. And we're talking to several different restaurants, we've talked with Randy Burleson, we've. There's the opportunity maybe for an Aubrey's there, I know he's looking at, you know, one or two different sites in Farragut now, but this is in consideration. But that's kind of it, this is, again, I think when you look at this. You just have to, it, it's such a hard piece to develop just to the depth of this property. Um, it's just not wide enough, it's very deep, so the transitional zonings that, that the steering committee. Put in place on this particular track, it's, it's almost impossible, quite frankly. And if, if there's anybody on that commission that can show us how we could do a transition on both sides of this piece. And still make the multifamily work, we would, we would look at that, but. We, we're just stuck with the seven hundred and fifty feet of, um, width to it and, and that's a, that's a concern. It's a constraint when developing this property.
Yeah, this is Mark, one clarification is the steering committee did not create the transition, that was in there from the start in two thousand and twelve. So that, all that and that policy was in there, that wasn't created by the steering committee.
Yeah, let me add this real quick, I know it's late and we've been at this a while, but we, this, the Bevins family was on this property since nineteen twelve. Eddie's grandfather Bevins had a big farm in Farragut and he gave his children. Uh, all about sixty acres a piece. Property to the west of there was one of the Bevins heirs. We developed Glen Abbey, we're the ones who did Glen Abbey. People didn't want us to do Glen Abbey either, they had too many houses, actually, they didn't want a lot of houses on that agricultural property. But we did Glen Abbey when I was a partner with Southern Blue. And then we did the coals up front, which of course generated a lot of sales back for Farragut and we made some money on it too. Uh, then the property to the east of this was another Bevins heir. Uh, grandfather Bevins children and we, we bought all that property in front and we sold. We, we did the road off of Kingston Pike, South Campbell Station Road. We did the South Campbell Station Road where you turn into the town hall. We sold the town, the property for the town hall. Uh, Mayor Leonard, Eddie Ford. Mayor, Vice Mayor at the time, we sold the land to the town, we also built all those buildings up front. And we built the post office and we thought. That this last Bevins property, which is Eddie's, was, was, he did a lot of great service to the town. He was vice mayor for years and years and then mayor for years. And he and Linda did a lot of great things for the town. We, we worked with Eddie to develop this last piece of Bevins property. And we, we, like Michael said, we believe this is where the town center ought to be. You, you said all the way back from two thousand and twelve and beyond, I guess. That you wanted the town center zoning within one mile of the intersection of Campbell Station and Kingston Pike. And everyone always told us, that's where you need to put any apartments. Need to put your apartments up there on Eddie Ford's property. And so we've got this good plan to do medical office retail on the front, multifamily and attached condos in the back. We all know attached condos have worked really well in Farragut, we need more of those. And so it's just, a, and of course, the last point is, you know, again, the two thousand and twelve land use plan. Change that was made with the text change to that plan, we thought was totally unfair to Eddie and Linda and this property. We think that was, I know everyone want to get rid of the old Kroger. I love David Purvis, I love Bud Cullum, we love Bud Cullum, he's a good, a developer friend of ours. And we want to get rid of the old Kroger too. Uh, and we support Bud Cullum and Joe Fielding's proposal. Uh, but this is where we believe the town center, the town center ought to be. With two or three stories, medical office retail right near the town hall and multifamily attached condo. And we think it adheres to the two thousand plan, land use plan. It don't adhere to the uh change, the text message change where you kind of pick one property that can. It don't adhere to the change, the text message change, where you kind of pick one property that can have multifamily, which we think was, I think, we contacted Tom Hale and told him we objected big time to that. So, that's all, I guess, we've got to say about, about that. It's just where we think the town center ought to be.
Do you have anybody, if you guys questions at this point?
No, this is Ed St. Clair, back staff developer. We also ask you to kind of go back and look at what had been proposed back in 2002, 2008. And I know y'all had a chance to do that, but, you know, the town center, the front end, we also talked about that being, you know, we had a lot of positive discussion on that. The real rub comes when you start talking about shoehorning R6 into that area. And, quite frankly, you know, the fact that, you know, we're at this point in time, and sometimes the ships have sailed relative to what you can do with this. You use the term bowling alley piece of property, you know, that we never had a vision. I go back on the planning commission to 1990, okay? And we never had a vision of apartment complex, you know, on that narrow piece of property, never. And, and I think it's a huge disservice to Glen Abbey and Park Place, though, to try and, you know, that buffer is nothing to those areas. So, I mean, there's certain part of this that makes sense, but there's another part that is little, doesn't make any sense at all to me. And I think, you know, I think Ron Pinchot asked y'all to look at maybe, you know, some condos and other concepts, but we need to look at that back end. I know you talked about, you know, shoot, I say, I think I brought up, in fact, there's two sides to the equation. Y'all talk about property property. Eddie wants to have the whole piece of property. Well, there's a reality to where it is now, and what, you know, there's two sides to that equation. There's a sell around about. So, I don't know what discussions you maybe have to go back to talk to Eddie about. What's, what's reality? Because R6, there's no way I want to support R6 right now.
My comment is, like Ed, I was on the planning commission in 2000, early 2000s, when we were discussing Eddie's property. At the time, both the town and the developers and Eddie and Linda and the planning commission spent a lot, a lot of time in coming up with the, uh, planning for this. There was both the, from the town staff, there was a lot of effort put into it. From the planning commission, we met for hours, not only on the planning commission nights, but at other times with, with the developer on developing this property. And it was a very good plan, I thought. It fit the property. Granted, like you say, it's a long, narrow piece of property, but it fit the property. And I don't know if you have looked at that or not, but it's a very good product. And it was something that I think would have fit in with the surrounding community on both sides of that property. But, you know, there is something that can be done there and done that meets the requirements, I think. Also, another thing that I would like to see with the town hall and the post office there between your property, or proposed property, and the property at Kroger, I can see all of that as a town center. I would like to see you coordinate with the other developer on the Kroger property with style of building, maybe. Or some, some coordination there that could be a very nice area for a downtown. Downtowns are not just one strip of property. And as long as there's commercial, I'm a little disappointed in the both pieces of property, the Kroger and Eddie's, in what's being proposed, that there's not more commercial. I realize this is a hard time for commercial, but I'd rather see more commercial and less housing. I think that's what a lot of us thought back in the early 2000s, and I know the times are different. But it's, I think it's still possible without having so much housing. And like everybody else, I'm, I'm not thrilled with the idea of apartments in that area, period. Like I say, I want to see more retail. I think that's, retail is downtown to me. And that, that's my view, but like I say, I think it would be beneficial for you to look at what was proposed before. A lot went into that.
Are you talking about the Michael Bates proposal?
I am, I am.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he proposed, he was just proposing development on the front park.
No, he had, he had the whole, whole property. There was some residential, I think, one near Ed at the top of the property on the hill up there.
No, we didn't spend very much time on that. It was mostly, you know, that's why I think extending a little bit on the front end is still kind of consistent with what we did back in 2007.
Right. It was a proposal for a graduate.
We had a, there was an open space, and then there was maybe some talk about some other, you know, development, but then there was never anything really that came to fruition, because we were concentrating on the downtown. In fact, there was more time spent later on of where was going to be the drive-through for the bank.
Or not drive-throughs at the bank. Still, that, I think that was in the, in Michael's original proposal, that there would be.
But it never talked about apartments?
No, definitely not.
Never talked about multifamily?
About on top of the hill.
It was more like what Park Place was. It was the only discussion I remember.
Yeah. On the top of the hill, there were houses. I remember that. And then there was something in front of that, maybe townhouses like Park Place. But there were definitely, definitely no apartments ever talked about on that property.
Yeah, this is Mark, and I remember it was townhomes like Park Place through that section with Park Place. And then to the south of that, it was even less dense residential. So, I mean.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's what I remember personally, but the only part they actually requested to rezone, you know, obviously to the TCD.
Was the front part.
Yeah, that went back to the, basically, the back of the town's property toward Kingston Pike.
Mark, this is, this is Commissioner Green. Mark, on slide 52, you've got a slide that's got some kind of like architectural renderings there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight little images. One of those images looks like a proposed, keep going, right there. The image that, the image on the upper left looks like some sort of proposal. Was that the one you guys are talking about, maybe?
No, it was not that. I mean, it's that property, obviously, but it's not exactly that kind of layout. But it, Mr. Horn's correct. It was the front part, as far as that rezoning, because that was a town center district rezoning, which the only residential allowed in town center district is on non-ground floors. And that's what it was, was going to be, a vertical mixed-use town center development that went back to basically the back of the town's property. And then from that point, as I mentioned earlier, the discussion was that the residential would match what it was adjacent to, and then even be less dense the further south you went. So, you could see on that image where Park Place starts, and basically what abouts Park Place is very low-density residential. I mean, you can see that right there. I think I'm highlighting it. It's spread apart, detached structures that are compatible. And then what abouts Glen Abbey is our layout and form of residential that's compatible with Glen Abbey. So, they're showing on that image that, how a concept of transitions could, you know, potentially be addressed with this narrow, narrow piece of property. So, I mean, it can be done, you know, it's just, it's not being done with, in the staff's opinion, with what's being requested at this time, nor can it be with what they're requesting.
And again, that's just a concept from a consultant in Colorado.
That's right, that's right.
That was never, that was never presented as.
No, no. It just was just a concept to show.
What-if kind of stuff relative to, you know, a potential vision.
It's a vision of how the concept of transition might be applied hypothetically is all that was, really, yeah.
We, we have the Michael Bates Site Plan. John Wright, who's one of our development managers, is in here with us. He's brought us the Michael Bates Site Plan, and he, he just went back halfway in the property, and he had a lot of, I'm not sure what those little building units were, but I can't tell whether that's retail pods or it was not, I guess it was not apartments. But we, what we'll do is we'll, we'll talk to Eddie Ford about this again. I see that, you know, we'll have a real struggle to get multifamily. I understand y'all's sentiment on that. You're going to struggle. You don't want, you don't want to turn down the proposal necessarily, but I understand you don't want multifamily. The problem is, like we told Mark in the staff developer meeting, you know, if we buy, if we buy the whole property that Eddie and Linda have, we have to have this multifamily, because they pay more per acre than certainly a tax condo. And I understand, I understand you don't, you don't want multifamily. So, let us go back and talk to ex-mayor and vice mayor Eddie Ford and go over this with him about our discussion tonight, and.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not us totally that are not interested in apartments. It's the other residents of the town of Farragut have very good arguments, and we represent all the people of the town of Farragut. And so, we have to ask the questions that they, they want the answers to, for one thing. And so, that's what I think we're doing tonight, is asking the questions that these people, people want to know the answers to. One of the things that I want to know also is, in your, I'm sure you've done some kind of study about the realities of apartments in the town of Farragut and the need. So, when you were considering that, did you also consider how many apartments the Kroger property was proposing and the property at Watt Road? We're talking what? How many, Mark? Around 500 to 600 apartments coming into the town of Farragut all about the same time?
Well, we, we, Chairman, we don't think, we, we, you know, everything's a gamble in the entrepreneurial world and, and the risk-taking world we're in. We don't think the Watt Road property necessarily will happen. We don't think those guys will ever pull that off. And then, we had actually two apartment developers that wanted to partner with us on apartments on this property, one from Indianapolis, one from Birmingham. And both of them want to go right where we show the multifamily units, and they know about the Joe Field and Bud Cullum development. But they still, and I'll say this, too, our Lanesboro apartments that we built, they've been 98% full. They keep raising rents. You know, it's, it's been a tremendous success. And, and the Overlook, Overlook north of Campbell Station has never really leased up very well. They're like 25, 60% leased, because people want to live over on this side of Kingston Pike. So, we, we, we can't, nobody can buy the whole property from Eddie and Linda unless you have multifamily. We can't put enough, you said retail, we 100% agree. We, we can get some retail uses in there. That'd be great. We've got coal. We might get a, it'd be a bigger box in 25,000 or 30,000 square feet. It'd probably be a bigger sized box in 25,000 or 30,000. Coal, I think, is 60,000 feet, what we did. We'd like to get retail, too, but I don't know who it would be. Publix should have gone here. We, we presented Publix this site years ago when they went over to the end of Perk Tree. And they were very slow over there. They should have already went on this property. Eddie has, then we had a number of contracts with Eddie then, and that would have been a big boon for us. But we, we'll, we'll go back and discuss this with Eddie. We do have the Michael Bates Site Plan. It's not a plan that we were adhered to. I don't think it, what he proposed, I don't think it'd fly at all now. I don't.
But Doug, the, I think the gist of what you're trying, you're trying to do on the front end is, is in the spirit of that with the retail and then the shop, you know, and the loft above and what have you. So, you know, there's, you know, that's very favorable to it.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
But, but again, when I go back into that R6, I look at each piece of property, it's got to stand on its own merits. It's not a matter of, you know, apartments, period, or not, no apartments, zero apartments, all apartments. It's a matter of, you know, what can you do with that piece of property? This one, and y'all, it is challenging on its narrowness, and then you've got the close proximity to those two other developments where people are living. And we've heard a tremendous chorus from people who are directly impacted, as opposed to, you know, all the harangue on the, you know, the Bud Cullum development and what have you, where you, you know, you measure the distance to the nearest house there. It's, it's stark contrast to what we're talking about here. And that, that's what concerns me here. And then back to the, you know, the other property we looked at, you know, on the north side of Ingles. You know, I was kind of looking at that individually on its own merits of what we were just looking at, not, you know, the fact that how it would integrate with the other, you know, assisted living. And so, you have to be, look at these things on their own merits, and have to have some flexibility. But again, there are certain, you know, certain reality of that side, you know, I understand, you know, I hope Eddie and Linda are still friends of mine.
They, this piece.
You know, there's, there's a matter of what is reality, what you can ask for a piece of property, of what it can be, and what it can be done with it.
Well, this, this piece of property is a beautiful piece of property in the town of Farragut, and but in the time that I've been on the planning commission, we've never had this kind of response from the citizens of any project that I've set on the town, the planning commission to decide.
That was so directly affected.
Right, right. We've, we've never had this kind of response from people.
And their, and their comments are supported by our, our Land Use Plan, is what.
Exactly.
So.
Eric Williams.
That's where we're coming from with, with this. Go ahead, Ron.
I studied Bates's proposal at length. I looked at the zoning and the property currently is. And you look at the proposal of the vertical mixed-use on the front, which was a, a good proposal. There's no doubt about it. Back in its day, that's what everybody talked about. And then I looked at how the rest of the property was zoned, and I see there that it had Office One, and then you look right beside Park Place, primary, and it was R1. And then you look right beside Glen Abbey, and it actually is, is currently still R2. And I would have thought, now, just, I mean, I, I don't know Eddie Ford. I've never met him or talked with him or, or anything. But what you said, Doug, you made a very good point on the, on the land use and the zoning. And if you look at both, you can say, okay, when Mayor Ford pulled his request for the settlement treaty, he left, he left all of it the way it was, and, you know, he didn't change. He, one, he very well could have. I mean, it was his property, and then he's owned it all, all of his life and his dad's life. I mean, it was, uh, his property and then he's owned it all, all of his life and his dad's life. And and, uh, so, I mean, it was something that he could have changed, but he didn't. And of course, we look at it now and, uh, uh, I agree with the staff regardless. I mean, it's, there's, there's no transition between the two, uh, to lower, to, to look with a lower density. Um, and, uh, I think that's, that's the rub of the whole thing here. And, and I guess, you know, like I said, uh, before, you, you can put the, uh, lower density on the side and, and maybe do something in the middle, but, uh, I don't think I'm gonna be able to get the twelve out of that whole section. Uh, but, uh, anyway, uh, that's my, how I look at it and, uh, uh, as far as the density on each side is what your transition is. A road, uh, you know, with a car, but tougher and a twenty uh, six foot road is, is, is not a, is not a transition in, in my eyes. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's how I go.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Does anybody else have any questions or comments tonight?
Uh, Doug, I'll just wait to hear from you all and how you want to proceed on that.
Okay.
And the previous item too, just let me know.
Okay. Well, thanks for your time and, and, uh, we, we, uh, will listen to all your thoughts and we'll, we'll talk to Eddie and be back in touch with you, Mark.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're all smart people. You, you'll figure something out, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten. Discussion on, discussion and public hearing on the aesthetic plan for verbal vertical utility infrastructure and public right of ways. Town of Farragut applicant.
Sorry, I had trouble with my mouse. All right. Yeah. I think it's asleep. Uh, it's passed its bed.
I'd say it's pretty nutty now.
Well, we've, I reviewed this last month as a workshop item. I kind of went through why we prepared this and, uh, the process that we used so far, um, the general layout that's in the plan. I sent to you all this afternoon, the revisions from the town attorney. There weren't many and they were to my opinion, very minor. He said he thought it read really well. So, uh, I'm not really concerned about that. Now, I will review a few of the things in the plan and just talk through, uh, real, try to briefly here, obviously, uh, of if this plan were in place a year ago, uh, what would it have changed in relation to some of the poles that we, uh, did conditionally approve and some of which have now been installed. So the, the plan has different types of pole scenarios. Um, you, you've got the existing utility system and trying to add these new vertical utilities on the system. That's obviously our preferred option because then you don't have any new poles. And, you know, it, you're not contributing a whole lot of additional clutter in your community. And then you've got, if you do have a new pole, trying to coordinate all the structures on the pole, both what are proposed in the present and then what what we're trying to also provide for are poles that can accommodate, uh, can address the future. So you may have a pole that might just be a light pole at this time, but it needs to be set up and constructed to be able to accommodate what we anticipate would be telecommunications antennas in the future, something similar to the image on the left, or the right, excuse me. And so those poles, you know, some of the components that we talked about, which is making sure that everything is as close to the pole as it can be. The antenna is actually embedded in the pole. Um, so we, we have a cap on the width of the antenna sheath, uh, which is called a cantina in this plan. And then if they had an equipment cabinet, that it's, it's kind of developed in the pole. And it basically, everything is flush with the pole. There's nothing protruding from the pole. Um, and it looks aesthetically pleasing. There's transitions, uh, as you go up the pole from the different components to give it a, a more aesthetically pleasing look. And we also talked about lighting a little bit. Um, and I, I made a lot of changes to that section just basically simplify it really and le- and give a lot of latitude really to the planning commission to make decisions based on the context and in relation to lighting because in all honesty, lighting is probably going to be something that largely would be driven by the town anyway. So we would want to, you know, adhere to the plan, I think, and provide for light poles that can, uh, provide for telecommunications as well, similar to the one on the left. And that's kind of a similar to a fixture that has been implemented on Concord Road as part of that road improvement project. Um, but this pole, uh, would be one, it's not in the community, but it, you can see that it is provided also for telecommunications. And just to think ahead, basically is what we're trying to do and plan ahead. And then if you had some system in your mixed use town center or, or even a mixed use neighborhood area where you might want to kind of a different look and feel to look at having a decorative fixture. And, uh, what I mentioned in the plan is to, unless the context would dictate otherwise, or, you know, uh, it would be a, a different fixture would be better. Uh, you know, go with the bell shaped fixture that has been used on two, the two new commercial projects that have been developed in the town's mixed use town center. The Starbucks property and the latitude thirty-five. So those are, um, they're parking lot lights, but you can still have a fixture similar to those on a street light, which, uh, a street light's a very different kind of um, use and intent, but the fixture itself could be transferred to that kind of setting. The thing is, you want to make sure that the pole itself addresses the, the co-location minimum component to be able to provide for uh, more than one, uh, vertical utility in the future, if not the present. So we're trying to minimize the amount of clutter. So let's talk through a little bit real quickly. We're going to look at some poles that we conditionally approved last year. Um, and some of which have been installed. The one on the left, uh, is on Sonia, right before you get to Admiral, where the walking trail comes in. Um, and how would that pole be different under, if this plan were in place? So biggest change is that, and we got feedback from the committee and, uh, the planning commission. The pole itself is not allowed to be wood anymore. So they would have had to put a galvanized steel pole there and painted it brown. And then this antenna, this cantina here would have to have been in the pole, similar to what are on the exhibits in the plan. These structures here that protrude from the pole around the bottom would also have to be in the pole. That's the problem with wood poles is you can't put anything in them. So everything has to be exposed to the outside and protrude from the pole. So that's one of the reasons in addition to durability and just a better long-lasting aesthetic uh, that we're stipulating that whether it's a telecommunications pole or a light pole, it's a new pole, it has to be galvanized steel. Um, so that's an example on that one. This pole, uh, has been installed along Parkside Drive and it's not too far off of what you would see uh, if the plan had been in place. The only main change would have been that these meter boxes, uh, all that would have had to been in the pole itself. And basically you just have handholds. So again, the goal is to have no, nothing that protrudes off the pole. Uh, and it can be done. I've seen it, uh, a couple of places out just recently in the Cedar Bluff area where they've done it. And, um, it, it's in the pole. And we've got an image at the Cove at Turkey Creek that Verizon submitted and everything they submitted for that pole uh, is in the pole. There's nothing that protrudes from the pole. So that would be a big, the big change there. Uh, the other is, this is an older pole that was approved as part of one of the original Zayo um, small cell structures. And obviously this protrusion from the pole that makes it more visible would not be allowed under the aesthetic plan. And then we also need to look at the relationship of the antenna in relation to the light fixture. So what could happen here? Light fixture would stay in the general location of where other light fixtures would be along that corridor, but the antenna might protrude above it. Um, but it would be very stealth and it would look like, more like the, you know, this kind of look here. Where this one doesn't provide for a light at this time. I think you could mount a light fixture on there. Uh, the key is to use a fixture that's compatible with the system you have on that street and in general, the, the type of fixture and where it's mounted in relation to the ground. Um, so that, that's a couple of things that would have changed. These are some, um, some of the black and white images of different poles that we looked at a year ago. And this is the one, uh, out at the Cove at Turkey Creek that would be most similar to what we would now require for all these new poles. Now, the Cove at Turkey Creek did not want a light on their pole. And we've, we have a language in the plan that addresses that. If, if the, if they don't want a light on it at this time, that's fine. Don't, but it needs to be a pole that if they did want a light in the future, it would be able to accommodate that in addition to the telecommunications structures that are proposed for that pole at that time. But you can see with this pole, everything was flush with the pole. Meter was not really protruding hardly at all. There, there's handholds along the pole. Uh, so it's very clean and as stealth as it, as it can be. Uh, the only thing that we would have required here is that uh, just to make sure that the pole would have the ability to accommodate at least one other telecommunications carrier um, or a light fixture to make sure that that would be in place or both ideally, uh, on the front end. So, uh, again, this is just some images, uh, of probably one of the ones that to me was kind of the most visually offensive was some of the ones that they, they ended up putting along Kingston Pike or going to put up along Kingston Pike. And these are those four G radio and, uh, cabinets that, um, you know, really are kind of, create a, a lot of clutter to me, uh, on the pole. Those obviously, because these are wood poles, proposed wood poles, that's another reason why no more wood poles, uh, if this plan's adopted. That all that has to be in that equipment cabinet at the base of the pole to where it balances the low and high part of the pole symmetrically. The high part has the cantina. Low part would have the antenna cabinet or the four G radio equipment cabinet. Uh, which probably will be obsolete frankly, in a couple of years. I don't anticipate that there'll be a, a need for that. It'll be, these poles are probably going to be more and more stealth um, as the technology improves and they're able to make things smaller and put them in smaller spaces. But these are, these are poles that would have been radically different, uh, visually, um, had this plan been in place uh, when these came before the, uh, the planning commission.
Mark, any poles have been put up so far?
Um, some of them haven't been put up because the fiber hasn't actually been extended there. Uh, I know of personally, uh, four that have been put up so far. There may be others, but there's four that I know of.
So we can get a jump on, um, that before more.
Future. Yeah, in the future. Yeah. That's right. And, you know, that's one thing that when, if, if the town center project moves forward, then we, he's gonna, we need to ensure that he understands that, you know, they need to set up the street light system that every, so, so many of these is going to have to be constructed in a manner that would provide for this in the future. Um, so that, you know, it's, it's a, um, it's thought about on the front end and it looks, um, aesthetically consistent, you know, throughout the, the overall system. And it's not an afterthought where you have a pole that gets replaced and it stands out as being inconsistent with what's around it. It's thought of on the front end. That's a key thing we're, that we, this plan talks about is trying to be proactive on these things and not reactive. And think about, and we can't really anticipate everything that's going to happen, especially in the area of telecommunications, but we can try to provide for with these galvanized steel poles, um, poles that can accommodate a, a fair amount of structures on them in the future so that we don't have as many poles in general. Uh, and that needs to be thought about in, on the front end with, with new streetlight systems that are true streetlights, not residential subdivision streetlights. Those are not the same thing. Um, I'm talking about streetlights that are in the public right of way that are intended to illuminate the traveled way. Uh, that's what we're talking about here. So, um, I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments, um, about the, the plan or anything you wanted me to go over in more detail.
Mark, this, this is Louise. Um,
Yep.
I spoke to, uh, Laura Squires tonight. I just, I really want to just, uh, relay what her, her concern was. I'm not sure how we addressed it because I'm not sure either one of us know what was going on. She's concerned about AT&T, uh, and they were doing some work on a pole, oh, oh, I don't know where Jimmy John's used to be. I don't know where that is. But she says they were hanging.
The town.
Yeah, they were hanging wires or cable. And, uh, she was concerned about, uh, what that could mean for us as far as, I know that we have cable hanging from some of our, um, we, they already do, we already allow that. I told her, we already allow them to hang cable instead of putting it underground. They, they can hang it.
On an existing distribution system, an overhead utility system. Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
If it was just cable that was like going into some, some like sweep wire, we'd require that, we'd require them to put it underground.
Yeah.
But then she started thinking, well, can this cable, could this be, uh, in the future, could that be the antenna, the cable? Uh, a cable be an antenna? And I don't. So she was asking if we would change the language to be aerial infrastructure. And I'm thinking we're, I, I think it's an intriguing idea that we need to keep on top of. But I'm not sure if we're trying to outguess a, a technology we're not aware of yet.
Yeah. I would not. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, the telecommunications area is you know, regulatory and technologically constantly changing. Um, I'm, we're just trying to put something in place here that will help in, at least in the short term until something changes to have hopefully better looking poles, um, when they do go up.
Um, I'm. All right. And that's, I just, I told her I would mention it, but yes, I, I figured as much. We're just, we're, we're kind of where we need to be for now. But we just need to, um, But we just need to stay on top of it, so.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
And that is one, one of the reasons that this is being presented as a resolution instead of an ordinance. It's a little bit quicker approval process. Should we need to make changes to it in the future, it'd be a little bit quicker to make those changes, which we probably will be doing that, because as I mentioned, this field is changing all the time. But, you know, I think it gives us a lot more protection for, particularly for residents than we have right now. It's not perfect, but it, I think it will help us have, I think it will also encourage, because of the cost, these, these telecommunications people to try to use existing overhead utility systems as much as they can, because the galvanized steel and all the, that is going to be a more expensive product, whether it's that or streetlights. But it's something that we desire as a community, because we want something that's durable and lasting and timeless, like our brick requirements with buildings. And that can provide for co-location and sharing, because it is more structurally substantial, you know, than maybe other materials. So, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
This is Ed. I think it's very important to get out in front of this as soon as we can. And I think we've got a good product here to move forward with. I think that I tend to look at Laura's comment, not as, you know, specific, but in the general, the technology is going to continue to evolve. And, and we, and so, you know, this is not stagnant either. We need to revisit it, but getting something placed now is most important. And I would point out too, that there was an event this week that may change the FCC's view of some things too. So, you know, the new head of FCC is not an ex Horizon lawyer. So that's, you know, as you say, it's right, it's hard, and technical.
This is Commissioner Myers. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 21-02 as presented.
I second that. Ed St. Clair.
Okay, let me do a roll call vote. Chairman Holliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner St. Clair.
Aye.
Mayor Williams.
Mayor Williams.
Commissioner Bellamy.
Aye.
Commissioner Vass.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pavlin.
Vice Mayor Pavlin, aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers, aye.
Okay, thank you all. That will move to the Board of Mayor and Alderman in February as well. And I do not have any utilities, but I do have a couple of comments quickly under citizen form. And these, we'll get through these. I only have two pages, I promise. The first one is from Rosemary Owens, 12714 Jarman Road. "To the mayor and council members of the Town of Faragut, the town center in the area of the Old Kroger Building in Biddle Farm seems to be an excellent idea. However, also having high-rise apartment buildings in that area is not a good idea. I make this observation because this area is already gridlocked with traffic several times per day, especially in the early morning when students are going to school and other people are going to work. And in the afternoon when students are dismissed. Then again, in the 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM time period when people are coming home from work, please multiply the number of apartments planned by two and you will get a good idea of the number of extra cars that will be using the streets in that area at least twice a day and probably during the same time periods mentioned above. Please think of how the quality of life will be affected by all of the residents now living in Faragut as they have to sit in gridlocked traffic day after day and reconsider the proposal of bringing high-rise apartments to the center of Faragut. I feel certain that there are other good options, other options for the Biddle Farm that would be more appropriate without bringing traffic gridlocked to this area. Thank you for your consideration." And the next comment is from William Smith, 11524 Ivy Chase Lane. "This is to let you know I'm opposed to the apartments being proposed at the Biddle property. Population expansion this administration is advancing does not fit with why many of us moved to Faragut. I cannot find any law that says the town has to allow hundreds of apartments built on each new development. I do see laws which state the town has a say in height density and setbacks, none of which are utilized by this administration. You people are transforming Faragut into a place very different than the one many of us moved here for. Also remember, as bad as the traffic can be now during a pandemic, it will be, it will only be worse once the world gets back to normal and you add thousands of new residents with your poor planning decisions." And then the last comment for this evening, Mike Mitchell, 716 Bricksworth Boulevard, Town of Faragut Planning Commission. "For months, the people of Faragut have demanded that the mayor and alderman conduct significant public outreach as required by Faragut ordinance on changes to the comprehensive land use plan. For months, the people have been ignored. In closed, our polls done by residents of Faragut that show the majority of respondents do not support a town center on the Biddle Farm. These polls prove the path you are forcing upon people is not what the people want. Biddle Farm poll shows 77% of respondents do not want a town center on the Biddle Farm. Town Center poll shows 71% of respondents want a town center on the Eddie Ford Farm. CUP density poll shows 74% of respondents want a town referendum on the density in the comprehensive land use plan. Aventine poll shows 86% of respondents think that Aventine Apartments at North Shore Town Center are suburban apartments and not a town center. Please show these polls on the screen so people can see them. We don't want Biddle Farm Town Center proposal. It is ugly, it is not a town center, and it is not Faragut. We request once again that you hear us and represent us." And that concludes the citizen comments under citizen form.
So the January 21st, 2021 meeting of the Faragut Municipal Planning Commission is adjourned.
Thank you, Rita.
Thanks, everybody, for staying up.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening and a great rest of the week.
Be safe.